Good late afternoon. Thanks one and all for being here. Let me call to order the special meeting of the St. Helena City Council for April 6th, 2017. And would our...
Both mics are on.
Does that work? All right. We're functional now? Okay, very good. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Pennell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Cobra Steen.
Here.
All right, that takes us to public comment. Because this is a special meeting and not a general meeting, public comment is limited to matters which are on our agenda. And what I propose is that as we go through the various departments and we hear from the department managers, I will then open up the public comment with respect to that particular department. And then we can keep the public comment associated with the particular department that's under discussion, if that works for everybody. And I think that's the way we've tried to do it in the past. So that would take us, at least for the moment, to opening remarks from our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. As your interim city manager, I bring a unique perspective to the city. You appointed me in January to implement city council directives and policy and bring stability during these times of transition, to prepare the proposed city budget, negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the Police Officers Foundation and the dispatchers, and to assist Bob Murray and Associates with the city manager recruitment. And to also view city operations with a new set of eyes. I have found the department heads employed by the city of St. Helena to be of the finest caliber that I have had the pleasure to associate with in the eight interim jobs I've had since my retirement as city manager of WOSCO. I believe the community is very, very fortunate to have such skilled managers who display energy, creativity, and dedication. I have to run to keep up with them, quite frankly. They're a pleasure to work with, and I just think the community is well-served by the talents displayed by each of the department managers representing their own academic and vocational disciplines. You'll hear from them shortly as we begin the slide presentation. As the proposed budget is being prepared, it has become evident to me that preventive maintenance of water, sewer, streets, and public buildings has long been neglected. St. Helena is a beautiful and charming community. I grew up in the Napa Valley in the 50s and 60s and want to retain the uniqueness that sets St. Helena apart from the other cities of the county. What is to be done? The residents of the community have done their part by approving a sales tax increase and via a 218 election approved increased utility rates. Over a period of years, these affirmative actions will allow the city to slowly address years of benign disinterest in reinvesting in our infrastructure so that each resident can enjoy dependable water and sewer service. If Governor Brown's gas tax and vehicle registration increases are approved, we should see improved streets and highways. The proposed 2017-18 budget will reflect more spending or monetary set-asides on infrastructure maintenance and equipment replacement, bond covenant compliance, and regulatory agency One might ask, what else is there to do? I would submit that there is still much to do. Investment in a remodeled corporation yard, an equipment maintenance building, enhancement of our ten parks, police department building, city hall, and building improvements to the wastewater plant are long, long overdue, exposing our residents and our employees, in some cases, to unsafe working conditions. My focus is to continue to process the responses to the city's request for proposals for the Adam Street property. This is a non-performing asset that could play a key role in quality-of-life improvements for all our citizens and municipal employees. My other focused objective is to expand our sphere of influence boundaries so that we might eventually be paid for the services we already provide outside our city limits. Our financial condition is very fragile. We must be conservative stewards of our resources. Continued demands on our general fund by the enterprise funds must be halted. Converting the Adam Street property from a non-performing asset would allow the city to improve our streets, sidewalks, our drainage systems, build public facilities that all residents could be proud, and finance affordable housing efforts, create transient occupancy tax revenue streams that would benefit us for generations and basically provide for the public good. We need to move ahead with measures that sustain our economic health and vitality in order to maintain the charm and uniqueness of this beautiful community. That's our goal. That's inherently included in our goals and objectives and our mission statement. We need sustainability in our revenue so we can meet the needs and the demands and the desires of our residents. As we go through the slideshow, I'm hopeful that you will be able to detect that commitment by our department managers to achieve those goals. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our finance director, who will moderate the slideshow and call on the appropriate staff members. So our finance director is Dr. April Metz. April?
Thank you very much. So the order is just going through each of the departments. Each of the department heads will come up to the podium and do their presentation, or if we're already seated here, will do our presentation from this location. And then it will be open to questions, as you stated, in public comment for the public in each of the categories, as well as the city council. And we do encourage questions and, you know, ask us what we're doing if you need clarification. I do want to start out the presentation talking about the city council. City council did have quite a few achievements last year, and so I wanted to be able to highlight a few of them for you. The first was the passage of Measure D, thanks to the residents and to the city council. That did pass and does allow for additional funding to go directly into the general fund. The approval of the new utility rates, which is much needed for our aging infrastructure, and our interim planning work... Our public works director will speak to some of those a little later. The formation of an ad hoc committee for review of the utility rate study. It's been done two different times. So the first was the initial review, and then we've also formed a new committee to be able to relook at the rates, relook at the capital improvement projects, just to verify that the methodology used is correct and current for our needs. They designated additional money to affordable housing development. Really important thing for the city, we know the affordable housing. We don't have a lot of it here, and we are working to get additional affordable housing. And through the city council directive, quite a bit of money has been set aside for these developments. We held a city council town hall goal-setting in February, which, in my opinion, was very successful. We were able to hear from the residents, and city council was able to hear what their needs are and their wants are for the community. Approved city council team-building exercise, which we will be holding shortly. We did adopt the 16-17 operating and capital budgets. So two different budgets were adopted this past fiscal year. Continued drought regulations and water conservation programs. Continued to pursue illegal short-term rentals, which has helped the community not only recoup some of the funds that we spend on legal and attorney's fees, as well as stop the illegal rentals. Approved a contract for professional services to hire a new city manager. And then in addition, one of the goal items that was done last year that the council set aside additional funding was for mid-managers and for executive staff to be able to attend more community events, so we can get out in the community and learn the community and make this our home as well. So over the course of the year so far, we've had 12 managers and executive directors attend over 24 local nonprofit events. And they supported the American Legion, Calistoga Rotary, Friends and Foundation, Ryanda House, Napa Valley Justice Center, the St. Helena Co-op Nursery School, Special Olympics of Northern California, which that's actually coming up in a couple weeks, and also the St. Helena Fire Department Lobster Feed, which our chief will talk about a little later. And then for requests for 1617, I wanted to start, just to make you aware, we have received our grant applications for nonprofits. The mayor currently has, I believe, the Pecador year be meeting with Ms. Parkowski soon. But we have received 13 nonprofit grant applications, which is up from last year, and the total grant applications is up to... For this year, it's $110,600 in grant applications. Last year was right around $70,000, so I wanted to make you aware of that. That is something that they will be making... We will be making presentations on their behalf at the budget hearing on May 2nd. And now I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Included in the slideshow are the list of accomplishments and achievements. These are achievements and accomplishments of my predecessor, Jennifer Phillips. And it'd be very presumptuous of me to take credit for this, and I'd like to move on to the next slide. I certainly embrace the goals that are listed on the slideshow, but I think those are better left to my successor, who should start the job on or about July the 1st. I'm pleased to advise the city council that in telephone conversation last night with Gary Phillips of Bob Murray and Associates, we have already... Or he has already received 16 applications from highly qualified candidates for the St. Helena city manager opening. And that's without a brochure yet. So I've sent out the proposed brochure to each of you, and I hope you've had an opportunity to convey your comments to Mr. Phillips so that they can get the brochure out in the mail and out to the different agencies that they normally send them. I'll do my best to assist both the city council and Mr. Phillips in the selection process of city manager, find the right person who can meet the needs of the community and exhibit the appropriate leadership and ethical style and values that we all hold dearly. And I think that's probably one of my biggest objectives. I'm not committed totally to presenting and adopting a balanced budget for 2017 and 18 because, as I mentioned a few moments ago, we have a host of unmet maintenance needs, and we need to face up to those responsibilities before our utility system becomes less dependable. And you'll see that in our spending program, but that's for another time in May. So I think that concludes my remarks for 1718.
Well, when you say a balanced budget, my understanding is that by state law, we have to balance our budget. What you're really saying is a budget that, at the end of the day, may require us to chew into some of our reserves.
That's correct. And chewing into your reserves on paper by allocating funds for future capital investment or capitalization of our existing assets. I'm not suggesting we spend tomorrow, but set aside today for tomorrow.
Excellent.
And next, under the city manager is the H.R.I.T. Director, as well as city clerk position. So Cindy is now going to talk about her accomplishments, her goals, and her needs. Microphone. I think I'm a little flustered with...
Our executive producer here.
Yes. We should be adding producer to your list.
Let's get through with the city clerk. They're all lumped together in one here.
So I'd just like to note that as your election's official, I've conducted the 2016 municipal election, and we had the passing of Measure D, which was quite the accomplishment. I've constructed the Laserfish. We have a lot went into this, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Kami's position later, the records assistant. But there's a lot of infrastructure that had to be built, and so it's really exciting that we actually went live. Implemented and fostered a transparent process for public service. I think our new website and the city council boards, commissions, and committees webpage is really helpful with providing additional information to the public. And so I've hired Kami, the administrative records assistant. She's on a temporary limited term, and we brought her on board because we identified the need to really get our records in order and be able to provide them to city staff and the public. I've implemented iCompass Agenda Management for city council boards, commissions, and committees, and also the live streaming that accompanies that. And that's also on our civic webpage. I provided Brown Act training and ethics to new council members and new committee members. I want to note that the city clerk's office has processed 224 public records requests. And I just want to just take note on that. I have a legal obligation to respond to any public records request. And I can't forecast when they come in, and I can't forecast, you know, what will be involved. This has really crippled some departments at times because they have to set aside what they're working on to be able to respond to the requesters. And I wholeheartedly believe in getting our records in better order so that we could have them readily available so we could better respond to people. So I have a big... Transparency means a lot to me and to provide the records. And so anyhow, I just wanted to note that we have a lot of public records requests that come through the office. And I've also prepared 39 city council agendas. My goals and objectives are to continue fostering transparency. I'm really excited to implement the Public Records Act Request Tracking Software, and that's going to be located on the civic webpage. And so I think that might help. I want people to be able to see what records requests come in and also see what the responses are. I've provided ethics training. Well, I didn't... But FPPC did.
You facilitated that.
Yeah, I facilitated that. I'm also... I'm proud to say that I did not have any late filers for my 700 statements. And we are going to be having a formal Brown Act training class with everyone. That's going to be coming up soon, and that'll be coordinated with the city attorney's office. I continue to cross-train my staff so we can pitch in and help each other out. And we're continuing the implementation of Laserfish. So to continue helping with working on the records and getting our records into good order, good order not only for staff but also for the public, Kami... The limited-term position, I would really, really request that it become permanent. I have sent her to lots of training. She has taken the lead on the Laserfish project. She is the one that's been trained on how to build the file plans and all things records in with Laserfish. So I can't be the only one that's the nerds records person at the city. I need help. So she's had a lot of training from the City Clerk's Association, Laserfish. She's been to lots, lots. I've invested a lot of time and training in her, and she is a big asset to the city. And I would love to keep the momentum going and really retain her. The next thing is I would like to implement the iCompass Boards, Commissions, and Committee Management Software. This is software to track applicants, when terms expire. It would be a nice tracking piece. The next big thing is the public-facing Laserfish link that would be located on our website so people could actually... The community could have tools of searching records all on their own, and that might help cut down on some public records requests. Plus, not only for the community, I mean, it would be an asset for the city council. It would just be... It would be really helpful. The next thing is, in order to implement Laserfish, we have to have a tool to be able to deliver those items into Laserfish, which would be a scanner. We have... A lot of our PRAs are for planning building-related items, like plans and things like that. And we, right now, don't have a mechanism to scan plans. So... And we have a lot of historical plans that would be really neat to be able to have scanned in, and I'm sure the community would be interested in, you know, being able to see those items. And plus, planning building, it would be... And public works, it would just be priceless. So with that, I would also like to ask for additional... So additional training in Laserfish. And that would be some workflow training. And it's just... It's part of the package that we have, and Kami could use some additional training. Any questions?
Let me...
Are we going to wait?
Yeah, let me open this to public hearing with respect to the city manager and the city clerk. If I look at this, it looks like human resources, information technology also really fall under city manager, city clerk. But I don't want this to build up to the point where we have too much information flowing just in one direction without opening up the public comment. So we've heard from the city manager and from the city clerk. Is there any public comment with respect to comments that either of them have made? Yes, Mr. Bartlet?
Andy Bartlet, 1286 Hudson. Mr. Pennell, I noticed part two of your objectives and goals were left off of this presentation. That was continuing and improving emergency preparation, but more in my interest was continuing working with the city council for viable options for the Adam Street property. But you covered that in your comments. So I don't really need to say anything other than I'm glad to see that's still there on the agenda. Eighteen months ago, a group of us started talking about city finances. We made presentations in December, January, February. Here we are, eighteen months into this process. The RDFs have been sitting in city hall since, I believe, September...
October.
October. So that's another six months, and I'm hopeful that they would take a very serious look at trying to get $22 million to $25 million worth of sales price and development fees into the coffers and $2.5 million, the $3 million of TOT. And I can think of no better recruiting tool than to tell a new city manager, we've done this one. We've got it in line. It's going, and you're going to have plenty of money to address these problems, and you're not going to have to suffer the grief of getting it all taken care of. Mr. Pennell, good luck.
Thank you very much. I think you're a bit ambitious, but... Thank you. Yes.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you for doing this. This is an awesome meeting that we're able to actually talk about the staff and everything that you guys do. I wanted just to stand up here and compliment the achievements and also support the goals of both of these departments, the finance and the city clerk. I think they both... All these people work very hard. And there were some things that... The chamber works with both of these departments on a lot of different things. One of the things that wasn't mentioned in finances is that the finance department also... Excuse me, fighting a cold here. Finance department also conducts all of our TID administration. That's the tourist improvement district.
We're going to get to the finance department in a bit, so...
I thought you already did.
No, we've got a lot more on the finance department.
Oh, okay.
It's coming up on 5.3, but city manager and city clerk.
Then city manager, I will say that I agree with what Andy Bartlet just said. Echo there his that we'd love to see the Adam Street progress and love to see something still continue there. City clerk, I think that Cindy does an outstanding job, and her staff does, too. I just know that that new website is much easier to use. It's a much better tool for everybody. I know the city council's looked for engagement. That's one of your main goals. And I think that that website is going to be a huge asset. She is your PR department. I mean, you really don't have a PR person, and so the city clerk has done a really outstanding job in being that for you, which is not necessarily her job title, but it really is the service she's providing. She... You know, I know she's out there trying to recruit people to your commissions and your task forces and all of that, and that's something that she didn't cop to today, but she does do a lot of that because she wants community engagement, and I think she does a really awesome job doing that. So I just wanted to give her a little bit of that credit and say that we appreciate everything that both the city manager's office and the city clerk's office does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further... Thank you. Yes, Ms. Manette?
Yes, and by the way, I'm speaking as a private citizen. And I have a couple of things, three things. First, I thought I heard it stated that the ad hoc committee, the new ad hoc committee on the water project, water rates, was just to verify that our methodology was correct. And I was wondering, is that the goal of the ad hoc committee? I hadn't heard that's a goal, but it was kind of stated as if it were. I may have misunderstood, but I just wanted to bring that up to...
Well, it seems to me that that was summarized as was appropriate, but the city council adopted a specific charter for the ad hoc committee that speaks much more fully to what they will be doing.
But do you feel that the ad hoc committee has been formed just to verify that our methodology was correct is an accurate summary?
What I was trying to say was that we adopted a charter. The charter obviously has a lot more detail with respect to it. And at the end of the day, the ad hoc committee is going to do what it wants to do.
Okay. I just... I wasn't clear on that. Thank you for clarifying. And the other thing, I was wondering, I've never heard our open property in the city referred to as non-producing asset before. So that's interesting to me, and I'm just throwing it out. It jogged my mind a bit. How does that goal of the city to get into production, the non-producing assets of the city, how does that connect to the goal of maintaining small-town character and to keep growth and keeping with that goal? So I just, you know, whereas, you know, I think our goal was stated by some people not to commodify, to totally commodify St. Helena and to turn every asset into a profit-making proposition. So it was a little bit of a disconnect for me to hear those two, and I'm just asking the council to consider those possibly conflicting goals or how they could be well-integrated. And then the other, I wasn't quite clear. It seems that the Laserfish improvements would cost about $50,000 altogether, but that we needed the part-time person in order to do the same work? Or did I misunderstand that? So would we still need the part-time person or the full-time permanent person to do the work if we were to make all those improvements to the Laserfish? Would that mean that we wouldn't need as so much from the other position? Or is that in addition to the other position? I wasn't clear on that, so...
Well, we'll let Ms. Black respond to that, but my understanding was that the city is overwhelmed with record-keeping problems, including an inordinate number of Public Records Act requests that it cannot function on the record side. on the record side with just the city clerk focused on that. Uh, we do have a part-time person, but the part-time person, in the city clerk's view and in my view too, needs to be converted into a full-time position, uh, so that the city clerk's office can properly serve the city. That's what I understood, but let me have the city clerk respond to it.
So, if you imagine, we've, we incorporated in the late eighteen hundreds, we have a lot of records and we have a lot of really neat records. I wanna get them scanned. And it's not a project that's gonna take a weekend. We're talking, it's probably gonna take a couple of years. So, um, so yes, the, the full-time position is very much warranted. And not only just to implement all the scanning, but there's just a lot of, there's a lot of records projects for her to, to do. And not only in the city clerk's office, but she's also gonna be working with each department. So, that's-
Just to clarify the, uh, the question, I believe that she also asked whether the, um, the proposed full-time, uh, limited, uh, full-time position would replace the current part-time position or would that be in addition to the current-
That's separate.
-part-time?
That's totally separate. The part-time person, actually, she's not part-time. She's a full-time person that I share with, um, with planning, building. That's Zinnia's position. Now, Kami is a full-time position. The records, the records assistant position is a full-time position. And I'm asking for that position to go permanent.
It's temporary.
Right now, it's temporary.
Right. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, please.
Hi there. I'm Elaine Mann. I live at, um, on Charles Avenue. Two people got up and spoke in favor of development of the Adams Street property. Um, and I wanted to support, um, Bobby's comment. I would prefer that we just put the brakes on that until we have a chance to evaluate the impact of the developments that are currently approved and under construction, not just here, but the ones in Calistoga, which are going to impact quite a bit of what goes on in this town. And in regards to the, um, this wonderful sounding, um, records, um, production on the, um, on the internet, I would be the first one who'd be all over that. But I, I'm, and it looks like a Cadillac program, so congratulations. But I just wonder how critical it is to spend the money on that at this point right now, given, um, the, the financial crisis I keep hearing the city is in. And that's, that's just my question. Thank you.
Again, this will all be evaluated further through the budget process, but, uh, one aspect of, uh, far better access to our records will facilitate, as the city clerk said, uh, our response, uh, to Public Records Act requests, which is taking an inordinate amount of city staff time. So, there's a huge savings to be accomplished by having records that you can get at efficiently. That's what I'm understanding from the city clerk at least.
And if I might note-
Yes.
-something I didn't mention is that we have a kiosk at the front counter.
Yes.
We're gonna have Laserfish available to the public through that kiosk. If we have, if we get the, the link on our city website, that's what I'm requesting, then it is available to the entire community at their leisure.
And that in and of itself might obviate some Public Records Act requests because people can access the records themselves. So, there are real efficiencies here. Uh, is there any further, uh, public comment? Again, just confined for the moment to the city manager, city clerk. All right, uh, then we'll move on to Human Resources and Information Technology, which-
Is there any, um, council?
Oh. Do you want, do you wanna hold the comments to the end or do you wanna have comments now? Either way, whatever works for everybody. Some preliminary comment? Sure.
I just have a question for Cindy about this Laserfish. How does it work? Are you actually scanning everything in-house?
No, the really, the, the nice thing is, um, if we have existing records on our servers, we can just basically drag and drop. But there's a lot of records that are not scanned, that are, that are in files. I can't, I mean, planning, building, um, file room is enormous.
And are you saying that in order to get these things online, we are, we would be scanning them ourselves or we send that stuff out to companies that do that work?
If, if I could find the funds to have assistance with scanning, that, that might be helpful and we can evaluate that at, at some point. Right now, it'd be nice if we at least get all of the records that we have on our servers, identify the records and get those put in to Laserfish. Um, I, I've started to, we've started to populate and it, it's working really well. It would be nice to, to be able to have it available to the public too.
I understand the stuff that's already on the server is in electronic form. And so, it's relatively easy to make that available so people can, um, use it or get information from it. What I'm not understanding is the stuff that's in the boxes that's not been scanned and is not electronically available. Is the plan that our staff is gonna scan that stuff or are we going to send it out to companies that don't?
No, right now, it's staff. Right now, we're gonna, we're gonna identify just so many hours per week to scan records in.
Okay. I, I guess my follow-up and last question would be, have you, um, researched or identified companies that do this kind of stuff?
I just, I just did a search and I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to, um, to see what, you know, the cost comparisons. So, but luckily, I, I've, uh, considered that.
Okay. I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah. All right, any further initial comments from council before we move on? Okay, let's go on to Human Resources and Information Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I've had the pleasure of serving as your Human Resources Information Technology Director for the last fourteen months. And so, we have a list of accomplishments, um, that I'm very proud of and certainly wouldn't be able to have done it without my staff. Um, and that's Administrative Services, Mandy Kellogg, and my, um, Accounting Technician slash HR Assistant, Stephanie Killingsworth. What's nice is that we actually, I do share the staff with finance. And so, I actually only have one full-time person, but I do share twenty-five percent with finance, Mandy Kellogg, and then, uh, no, yes, and then I get twenty-five percent of, um, Stephanie. So, in terms of our list of accomplishments this year, um, I'm happy to say that we've revamped our hiring process and includes implementation of a new recruitment website. Um, last year, I had asked for us to have a recruitment website along with an appraisal system. That system would cost us twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars, but through some of the, um, the conferences that we go to, we were able to find CalOps. And so, with a five thousand dollar, uh, initial investment and then two thousand dollars monthly, we're able to have a now, an online, um, recruiting software where people can actually go online and submit their applications. And just to give you an example of how streamlined that process is, um, the Public Works Director, I was able to post that. Um, the application closed on March twenty-fourth and tomorrow I'm having interviews. And so, I was able to actually book the appointments online, send out, um, thank you letters and things like that. So, um, in terms of time, that has been tremendous for my staff and I. Um, we implemented that about, um, I think, end of last year. Um, so for the year up until now, we've done twenty-eight new hires, including ten full-time and then eighteen part-time. We've also established a citywide internship program to complement the volunteer program. And, um, and we are about to embark on our first internship program, happy to say, um, with planning, I believe, um, we're about to post that. Um, and so, um, we were able to do that. We also compiled a, um, benefits compensation package to all of our full-time employees. Um, and it's, what is nice about that is it allows the employees to not just look at their job in terms of their base salary, but to understand the compensation that they get along with that, which includes health, vision, um, dental, and then the paid time off. And so, um, we, we provide this and we're, so this is our first year of doing that and we're, we're gonna continue that process. Um, we continue to support, um, citywide safety and professional training. Um, part of, uh, as my role in Human Resources is also to do risk management. Um, that was just too long to put in my title, but it is something that we do. Um, we do the workers, we process the workers' compensation in, um, in partnership with Remif, um, but we also provide citywide tra, training, um, with, through my safety officer. And so, um, through my safety officer, um, they, we will get a, I'll get a, an email that says the, what training is available and what the, like the Public Works, what they have to do for the month. And so, they'll, I'll coordinate that with Carlos, the Public Works Manager. In terms of highlights for our HR, our information technology, we did launch a redesign of the city website, complete with an intuitive design and a functional internal staff interface and training. Um, what our system lacked, um, in terms of our old website is the ability for staff to really interface in that and no one received training. And so, when we did have that new website, um, I, I, I took the initiative and, and taught myself how to do that and then became the, the pseudo-trainer. But, um, at least with this new site, we have, uh, staff interface and there's training modules. And, um, we were looking at doing a new website upwards of ninety thousand plus. Um, we were able to do that for less than ten thousand. And the consulting firm, AHA, has been tremendous. Um, I give them applause for, uh, all the support that they've given us. Um, and I believe the transition's been pretty seamless. There's been a couple of hiccups, but they've always been responsive. Um, in terms of our IT, it is, it is contracted out and so Marin IT is our contract service provider. Um, they did implement a help ticket agent program for both, uh, information technology and for, um, maintenance, uh, Public Works Maintenance. Through that servicing ticket, um, program, we processed five hundred and eighty-two help tickets, of which two hundred and fifty-four were information technology requests and three hundred and thirty-seven were Public Works requests. And I like to say that that doesn't include any emails that anybody actually sends out 'cause we do have personal relationships at the city and so sometimes those do get captured. Um, we do encourage our staff to submit the tickets 'cause this gives us an idea of how much we're actually processing. When we do it by email, we don't know how much we're processing, so. Um, and then, excuse me. My goal this year is, um, to update the citywide phone system with a voice-over-internet protocol system. Um, we, I, I can't say for certain that we're going to do it, but I'm pretty positive that we will. Um, the goal is actually not to cost anything for the city. Um, we wanna just take current funds and leverage that and then go into, um, uh, the ability for us to, um, manage our voicemail, which has been a problematic, manage just calls coming in. Um, and then when people move, um, our current vendor, I say, um, when we need to make a request to have a phone move, it's a email and a hope and prayer they'll answer. Um, this will actually allow us to, um, because it's, it's internet-based, the phone plugs into the internet line and if that person moves offices, that, that line goes with them. Um, there's, uh, various other features, but it should, it should, um, we should be able to do this without any cost to the city. At least that's my hope. Um, there are some things that we did for information technology. We did enhance the reliability and the manageability of the mail server upgrade. Um, and this allowed us to also makes, it makes PRAs easier, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't stop our PRAs from coming. We also implemented a digital system inventory management and intensive monitoring database with appropriate system alarms and ticket integration. What that does allow us to do is if the, if the server room or, um, is getting too hot, it will let us, the, the IT department know and then we, we can go in and do something. Um, I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to see where our, our IT servers are, but, um, it can get quite hot in there and so we implemented that. Uh, this monitoring system also allows us to see if any of our systems are failing. And so, if they're getting to a critical point, we can replace them before they go bad and lose valuable information. Um, we also boosted our backup implementation Veeam backware. Um, basically, that's our everyday backups for the city and that's been critically important for us. Um, sometimes our systems go down and we're able to restore it back to a certain time and point. We've also rebuilt the library server and joined it into the city hall domain and joining the library staff and workstations to the city hall domain for the first time. Some of the goals that we would like to achieve for this year are some carryover that we had last year, um, is to update our safety and human resources policy. Um, we did start that policy, but with everything else, we kinda put that on the back burner. Um, and along with the safety and human resources policies, we would also update our handbook. Um, we would also like to update our job descriptions, given, um, the, the way we've reorganized the city, um, in some of the positions. We haven't updated the job descriptions and that's critically important. Um, with that, we'd like to conduct a, a citywide total compensation survey. Um, and I'll touch base on that more on my requests. Um, we'd also implement a human resources, um, capitalizing on internship program with a focus on workforce planning and, and employment and risk management. Uh, that would also reestablish this, with that, the help of the intern, we'd like to reestablish the safety committee and conduct another EOC drill. Um, we can, we'd like to continue the support of citywide safety and professional training and development and then also assist department heads in filling department vacancies. Um, for information technology, we do want to implement the employee self-serve portal and really, um, drive our city employees to the internet. I was able to launch that last year, but we don't have a lot of activity there, um, with any websites. Uh, that became more of a focus, but we'd really like to drive more of our employees to that so they can self-serve. Um, and, and we'd, continuing for the rest of the year, we'd like to identify improvements in delivering city services, incorporating advancements in techno, information technology, which I'll touch base again on my requests. Um, uh, again with the, utilizing the inventory management system for ease of management and then possibly investigating mobile device management for city iPhones, iPads for better management of the mobile environment, including assisting with lost or stolen phones. And so, that brings me to my requests. Um, I did touch base on the citywide classification and compensation study. What that allows us to do is it allows us to look at, um, job descriptions and how we have reorganized our city. And so, I think those things have changed and quite honestly, our staff doesn't have the capacity to look into that. And so, this, um, citywide classification and compensation study would allow us to do that. Um, Mandy has worked with other agency in terms of scopes of work and through that, um, that the range is about thirty-six to sixty thousand dollars. So, uh, if we were to do it, we would go out for a request for a proposal and certainly, um, hope to come in between there. I did also want to say that, um, let's see. The classification and compensation study does review the list of cities currently used for our salary compensation and recommended appropriate changes to the city's current listings. Um, it would recommend any changes to the current city's listings. And then it would also recommend any salary benchmarks in conjunction with relevant classification benchmarks. I do wanna say that the last study that the city did for, um, a compensation, it was, and it was just a compensation study, uh, was in May of two thousand and eight by L.B. Hayhurst and Associates, although, um, there was a rec, there was recommendation in terms of salary adjustments, um, and, um, job classification changes that the city council did not act at the time. Next, again, with the internship program, um, we're looking at a cost of, of ten thousand two hundred. Um, what we would do with an intern is, um, focus again on, um, workforce planning, employment, organizing our city records, um, personnel records, and then risk management. Um, we're supposed to have a safety committee and then, um, we, currently, that's been put on the back burner, but I'd like to focus on getting that implemented. And then our last EOC drill was back in two thousand and fifteen. So, I'd like to have another EOC drill sometime this year. Um, last year, in two thousand and fifteen, it focused on managers and mid-managers and the goal was to, um, include our supervisors, um, like Public Works, and it didn't, so we'd like to really do that. Um, so, and then as far as improved technology to incorporate, these are a list of things that the Marin IT had, I, when working with him, had, that I identified for us to do to make our system more efficient. The improved technology total would be twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, seventy-two hundred of that, it's not listed, I, I failed to put that in, but it's the Veeam Cloud Backup. Um, that system, um, would complement the current system that we have. But they write, they do recommend that, they, um, we implement that. Um, and then a two-time Cisco ASA, both, it's a, it, what that is, is both Comcast internet connections are connected to an old unsupported Juniper firewall. Um, if this hardware were to die, there would be no replacement available or support available to fix it. It speeds, uh, the firewall capabilities and outdated, um, systems. Replacing it for each connection and moving the router to, uh, the forty-five-hundred-X to our server room is highly recommended by Marin IT. And that would cost eleven thousand dollars. Um, for police, they need a ten gigabyte HBA card- For police, they need a 10-gigabyte HBA card providing more bandwidth in their department, and then also RAM additional, providing faster server speeds and response times for an additional thousand. So, currently, their staff sometimes experiences, or oftentimes experiences, the inability just to print, and so it's because the lines are slow and old. And then, the fire department would need a 12-U network cabinet for $1,300. This storage closet is where all of the important switching and devices are currently housed. By adding a network closet, we can secure the important infrastructure and also house more resources, such as their server, on the premise rather than relying on the City Hall server for all infrastructure housing. So, currently, we're supporting them at City Hall, but the buildings are completely separate. And then, finally, there are citywide cabling issues. Again, that's just overall...the city held off on doing rebuilding the cabling wire because there was thought or hope that we might be moving or getting a new City Hall. So, since there...if there's no plans on moving, then it's highly advised by Marin IT to speed that process up, because what happens is when one person's on that cable, it's fine, but when you have the entire city on it going full bore, it really slows down productivity and our ability to do work. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any initial questions? All right, let me open it up to the public hearing. Listen up.
I really was not going to speak today, but...okay. I suffer from acronym trauma, and I'm just asking, I know that, I don't expect...these guys are such experts, and I totally respect what they're saying, and part of that is I don't understand part of it. I don't know what PRA means, and I don't know what a voice-over IP system is, and an EOC drill, and that sort of thing. And I mean, just for the public, you guys probably know, and certainly they do, and I understand how much better educated and trained all of these people are than I am, but just speaking for the public, if, especially in the financial stuff, if at least the initial reference could be explained, if the acronym could be spelled out, it would be very helpful for me anyway, and I think...
Good comment.
Thank you, your point well taken.
Ms. Robinson, do you want to speak to that? EOC?
Emergency Operations Center.
Good.
The PRA is Public Records Act. That's what Sydney refers to for our requests, and then the voice-over Internet protocol. So, that's actually where your phone is plugged into the Internet vice a landline. It's packable. That's what's great, is currently the chief doesn't have a phone in his office right now because we haven't been able to get our person to make that line live, but if we had the voice-over Internet protocol, he would be able to just unplug where he was, plug into the new spot, and we're good to go.
I had just one brief question. Have we recently performed or had performed an outside firm to do a security audit of our records? In other words, a hacking intrusion to see how vulnerable or how strong our systems are to unauthorized intrusions?
I believe Marin IT has, but I could find out and let you know.
Yeah, it's usually someone other than our own IT company to do those kinds of operations, and I'm concerned...I don't know if there's an issue or not, but you want to test it every couple of years to make sure it is not vulnerable.
I'd be happy to look into that for you.
All right. Any further initial questions? Do you have further public comment? Sure.
I think the intern program would be...
Can you face the council, please?
No, sorry. I think the intern program is a great idea. It's a way of getting work done at less than full price. And I know that Jennifer was looking into volunteer program, and that might be a good idea, too. I mean, most of the departments can't use volunteers, you know, planning, public works, you know, police, fire. But there are departments that could definitely use volunteers, and I know a couple of elderly neighbors used to volunteer at the library, the parks, you know, clearly, we could, you know, have cleanup day at the parks or something. But, so, I was just curious about any volunteer programs, or I know volunteers can be hard to handle and coordinate, but a lot of nonprofits in our community, the Land Trust comes to mind, they've got 100 volunteers. And so, even though they're hard to deal with sometimes, if you don't have any money, it's a good thing to do, so I'm just curious what the status of that is and what the thoughts are, what people think about that.
All right.
I'm happy to report that in May, the police department will be bringing in a very robust senior volunteer program. They've worked very hard thus far in building an operations manual, to which I'm coordinating with the attorney and other departments, and so... I'm sorry, they're doing an incredible job. I was very, very impressed with the work that the police department did. Usually, people come to me with an idea and say, "I want to do a program," and I'm like, "What do you got?" And I just want to do a program. But the police department actually had a very thick operations manual, complete with application and a process, and so I was very happy to work with them and very honored that we will be bringing that. Our goal is for May, and it looks like we will probably be able to do that.
Terrific. Any further comments from council at this point? All right, that takes us to finance, and is that you, Ms. Mitz?
That is me.
Oh, city attorney, I jumped over the city attorney.
Actually, you are good. You said it correctly. In the order of the PowerPoint, I reversed the two, so I am going to go first, and then I'm going to pass it over to Tom.
All right.
So, some of our achievements for 2016-17 is we did present and adopt fiscal year 16-17 balanced budget to the city council. We did complete our 15-16 CAFER, and that, I am very happy to announce to you, will be presented at the April 25 council meeting, and our auditor is actually going to be on site, do the presentation, and be able to answer any questions as well.
And CAFER is Consolidated Annual Financial Report.
Financial Report, I'm so sorry. Yes, it is our annual financial auditor report. Thank you. I forgot. We have reconciled and updated several accounts, which were left undone since 2011. This is a very large thing, very much a consolidated effort from everybody in the finance department. Mandy works very, very hard on our audited financials, and this year, we got everybody involved in actually reconciling some of these older accounts. We have created a utility billing and accounts receivable and transient occupancy, or the TOT manuals. And again, this goes right in hand-in-hand with what our HR IT director said. I could not do it without all of my staff. I obviously cannot do all these things on my own, and the staff has been phenomenal. We have developed a contracts process, and this is something we've worked hand-in-hand with the public works department on. We do contracts with many of the different departments, but public works has the most amount of contracts, so we have worked with them as well with the city attorneys in order to get some pretty refined contracts in place that don't...we don't need to adjust a lot when we have new vendors coming in place. We continue to work on city and department policy and procedures. Additional achievements, worked hand-in-hand with the public works department in completing the utility rate study. We've developed a centralized utility billing inquiry system, and this came about after the new rates went into place, because we did have so many questions, and we continue to have questions. And so, what we've done is we've come up with a central system where we can log everything, track, get track who the requests have gone out to, to make sure that we are responding in a timely manner. We've created and adopted policies for nonprofit funding, the CARES rate, which is for low-income assistance for utility rates, leak adjustments as well as stale data checks, and that was one of the items that was put on there by our...last year by our auditors. We continue to work on the forensic audit. We are getting pretty close. Hopefully, by May, we will actually be able to do the presentation. We are coordinating with the forensic auditor to see what council meeting they can come to and actually present the findings. We prepared quarterly financing grant updates for the city council, and also we have conducted and we're continuing to conduct internal auditing reviews within the finance department.
Can you explain a little bit more what an internal auditing review is?
Yes. What that is, is our staff, we look at everything we do internally within the finance department, whether it's utility billing, whether it's how we do processes, and what we do is we basically audit ourselves. One of the largest things that came out of the internal audit process in fiscal year 15-16 was auditing all of our water and utility accounts, and this is where it came to light that there are several, primarily retail customers and commercial customers, that we found that we weren't charging the right and the appropriate fees for water and sewer usage. And so, because of that internal audit, we were actually able to recoup about $120,000 in lost revenue due to back billing. A lot of that had to do with the communication between departments and going back years past, where, for instance, something might have come to the planning commission, use permits might have been issued, finance was never notified that a use permit was issued for a different type of use. And a good example of this is Davies Winery on Main Street. They were actually classified as a service station from when it was a car dealership from years back. So, things like that we're catching, and we're doing an internal audit. Jen Weeks, who is our accounting technician in the department, she has been instrumental in going through and identifying, and basically is doing a spot check on every single customer that we have, or every single internal process that we have, so we can catch these in a much more timely manner as opposed to catching it five, six, seven years later. Some continued achievements in relation to grants. In fiscal year 16-17, so far to date, we've had $706,000 in new grant funding we've received. I added a separate line item for this for fiscal year 17-18. It's an additional $1.4 million that we're anticipating, and that's based primarily on a $1.2 million grant that the public works department, we've worked with the public works department on this grant, and it's for sidewalk replacement, and I believe, and Erica can comment on this further, it is for the sidewalks up and down Main Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so it is, those are projects that will be more or less implemented during next fiscal year, and then once we've completed the project, at that point is when we receive the grant funding back. Currently, right now, we have active grant management of $2.1 million. So, what this is, is every single time we get a new grant, we have to manage that grant. So, right now, for active grants, notwithstanding the flood control project, it is $2.1 million. So, these are things that constantly we have to prepare quarterly or annually reports to different entities that have given us the grants. It is doing closeout phases, so certain grants can't get closed out for X, you know, X number either months, years, until after the grant. So, it's working with all the grant agencies, so it's a lot of different things that we're juggling, so that's $2.1 million. We have implemented the nonprofit grant program, so fiscal year 16-17 was the first year for it, so we're very excited that we actually have a process in place. When it comes to flood control management, so in addition to the active grant management of $2.1 million, Measure A is a total of $18 million that we're still actively managing, and Department of Water Resources is also $2.3 million that we're actively managing. Some of our goals and objectives for the next fiscal year is to complete our CAFER audit by December 31st. That is the deadline that is typically in place in the past two years because of all of the cleanup measures that we've had. We've gone well past that December 31st, so it is our goal next year, and after working with the current auditors for the past two years, we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to meet that goal. We want to increase, continue to increase the level of efficiency and effectiveness within our department, and that's through the better internal controls, processes, and training, as well as working really heavily with the other staff members within City Hall and the other departments, and I feel right now we have a great working relationship with all the other departments, and things aren't slipping through the cracks as they were in the past. We want to continue cross-training program for all of our departmental staff. I, as well as other department heads, really want to work on the theory that if you have someone out for an extended illness, something happens, we want to make sure that we can just pick up the pieces and roll with it, as opposed to scrambling where things not being done. So, we want to continue our cross-training program. We want to also continue to review and update the finance policy and procedures, and we also want to begin the establishment of an equipment replacement and sinking funds for city buildings and property. That's something over the past two and a half years since I've been here, we've constantly talked about. We have not had the opportunity in the general fund to be able to establish those yet. What they do is the equipment replacement fund, that allows us, and you'll see in this year's budget, several people make requests for a new city vehicle. For instance, police department is $40,000 for a city vehicle, and right now, it's done as an operations budget, so every year, if you need a vehicle, it's placed as a line item. What the sinking or the vehicle replacement fund does, instead of asking for one big lump sum, every year, you might establish $10,000, $20,000, will go into that fund, so that way, when vehicles need replacing, the money's already there as opposed to being a line item. So, that is what it's meant by establishing the equipment replacement fund. We have not done that yet for the city. We currently have 45 vehicles, and I believe it's 15 pieces of equipment, which includes generators, trailers, those types of things. Typical lifespan is anywhere from four to 10 years, depending on the type of vehicle. We have one of the largest vehicle expenses that we'll probably see coming up in the next couple of years is a replacement of, and I will defer to public works, it's a vector or a vector, as well as a street sweeping device. Both of those run between $200,000 and $300,000. Their typical lifespan is about 10 years. Right now, ours are running at 12 years and 17 years. So, you can tell we're getting to the time where we need to start replacing that, and we also need to start setting aside money to replace it, so it's not such a large hit to the budget. I do want to point out that this, the 45 vehicles that we have, does not include any of the fire department apparatuses, which three-quarters of a million dollars easy, and our fire chief can speak to that a little bit later. For the sinking funds for city buildings and property, same concept as the equipment replacement fund, is typically you set aside funds every year to account for depreciation in assets, so that would cover things such as carpet replacement, replacing the fixtures, doing wear and tear fixes on the properties. We've never set that money aside, so every year, again, it's just an operational, we might need $100,000, we might need $200,000, just to fix these during the next fiscal year. However, we need to start setting aside money in the sinking fund, and with the passage of Measure D, that gives us a little bit of extra money in the general fund, where this is the perfect time to be able to start setting those funds aside. And continued and goals are to continue to seek viable grant options. Our grants manager is consistently looking at different grant options. When either other departments or the public bring grant opportunities to her, we definitely review them and see if they fit into the scope of our council-directed policy and procedures. We do want to implement an online business license payment module. Right now, business license payments, they physically have to come into the building to pay for their business license. There's no way for them to be able to do it online, and we would like to be able to implement that. We would like to complete a full CIP, which is Capital Improvement Projects Fiscal Audit. Over the years, we have different capital improvement funds or project funds that have been designated. We've never done a complete fiscal audit of those funds to be able to ensure that the money going in from, for instance, impact fees are being spent appropriately on the appropriate capital improvement project, so that is one of our goals for this year. We would like to continue to monitor revenue and expenses. As you'll see in the CAFER that is presented, our audited financials, this year's been amazing as far as seeing how much revenue we've taken in, seeing the expenses going out, and really working with the departments to make sure that they stay within their spending limits, and that's something we want to continue doing. We would like to complete our user fee and impact fee study. These are...this is a study that we actually started, it was probably about a year and a half ago that we started the process. Unfortunately, due to other projects that come before the finance department, as well as the public works department, planning departments, this has been put on the back burner. They are very labor-intensive projects when it comes to staff time, and we would like to get them done, and what that would do is allow the city to recoup fees for different things, different services we provide, particularly when it comes to planning and development. So, if a planner developer comes in, they fill out an application. We like to see about a 75% to 80% recoup, like cost recovery. We would love to be able to see that come in a little bit higher, and implementing these new fee studies will allow us to do that. We'd also like to bring to city council for guidance and approval additional fiscal and finance policies, including debt management, fund management, code of conduct, and that's your ethics. We want to make sure that we have solid policies in place for that. Just a quick note on debt management. I actually did just see an email come in today from BLX, who is the organization that provides our continuous disclosure for our bonds. Debt management, there is actually something that's coming forth where debt management, if you do not have a debt management policy in place, you cannot have any bond issue, you cannot get issued any bonds, and that's for any bonds in 2017. you cannot get issued any bonds and that's for any bonds in 2017 and the future. So that's something that is coming down the pipeline. So, once I saw that today, I believe that is going to be my number one priority as far as getting for finance policies. Some continued objectives, and this is just in relation to the flood control project. There are still a lot of moving parts, even though we have a flood, a flood wall, the flood is, the flood wall did work during the last set of big storms, which is, which is a big accomplishment. But we still, on the back end of things, we have a lot of things to wrap up, including completing the forensic audit, completing the audit with the county for the release of the additional Measure A funds. And this does include completing the contract amendment for the expenditure, for being able to use Measure A funds to be able to pay off the SRF loan.
SRF being State Revolving Fund.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. I'm sorry, Bobby. Completing conservation easements, completing deed restriction, deed restriction for the incidental take permit, complete transfer of the Native American artifacts to Sonoma State University for the, I'm probably not going to pronounce this wrong and I apologize, the Mishawal Wapo Tribe?
You got it. Mishawal, yeah?
Mishawal. Okay, I might need to take a little drink. There you go. No, I appreciate that. Closeout of our Department of Water Resources grant, closeout of Measure A funds. Measure A is coming to a conclusion after fiscal year 18 and that is when Measure T for transportation is going to be, come aboard. So we do have a limited amount of time to actually close out those funds and make sure that we can, we can get all of those funds that are allocated to St. Helena to St. Helena. And also a complete contract amendment for the State Revolving Fund. And I, I got those mixed up. I put SFR instead of SRF. Now comes to our requests, which are not pretty for some of the categories. The first is a temporary limited term position to support the remainder of the flood control project. As you can see, we're requesting approximately $50,000 for that. It could either be a limited, a temporary limited term position or a consultant. We don't quite know which is going to be the best use of resources at this point. It's something we're still looking at. But that is to assist, help assist the staff in all the things that we need to do for the flood control project. We do have a grant manager position right now, as you can see, in order to look at every other grant, get other grant funding in for the city. That takes a considerable amount of time. In addition to that, she does serve as a finance manager, so she helps out with numerous finance, other finance-related capacity in addition to the floods. So she manages all of our contracts, our insurance with the contracts and with the vendors. So it's pretty labor-intensive and we know to finish off the flood control project, there is a lot more labor, it's a lot more that needs to be done, so we are making this request. Additional funding to closeout flood control-related projects. So that includes the proper processing of the artifacts, incidental, incidental take permit, conservation easement as well as legal costs. Right now, the cost is approximately $192,000. So that's in addition to what we've already spent. The good news is, once we do close out the DWR grant, we are most likely eligible to be able to receive $237,000 that they will release back to us. So part of it, we will have some offsetting revenues that will come in. But right now, the estimate is about, just shy of $200,000 to be able to do that.
DWR being Department of Water Resources.
Yes. Establishment of a vehicle, equipment replacement funds. We are going to suggest that it's $100,000 because most vehicles, again, have to be replaced every, you know, four to seven years depending on usage. I am looking at other entities that do have vehicle replacement fund policies and procedures and I'm, and they've been able to provide me with some pretty good guidance on mileage and/or years for vehicles. The next item is establishment of sinking funds for city buildings of $200,000 to be able to place in those funds. So that way, we are not having to put it in as an operational item every year. What we do instead, we would just designate a certain amount of dollars every year. Initially, this amount is going to be really high because we don't have anything. Over time, that amount, you'll see it lower and lower and it's just going to be based on depreciation. And then also the establishment of a business license online payment with, which the initial estimates right now is about $50,000 for the initial cost. Ongoing costs would be about $7,500 per year from the, from the organization that would manage that for us. I am definitely happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Well, are there any initial questions from Council? Let me open it up to public comment, yes. Former Mayor Laurel Smith, wonderful to have you here.
Thank you.
As always.
This is wonderful. I'm glad you certainly are including the public and your perceptions and gather their perceptions of the challenge you and all of us face. I'm one of those old age nerds that finally fell in love with the internet and Facebook and all that stuff. And I resist the temptation to come in for public information requests and I go to the website. And I want to commend you for the evolution of the website. It has, has evolved. I would like to suggest there is a challenge that I have not quite understood and maybe it's the way I don't understand as much as I could. I'm assuming, and someone can tell me specifically, what is your largest single expense category?
In the general fund?
In total. What money, what, what does the city spend more money for than anything else?
Personnel.
Personnel. What percentage of your total revenue is spent on personnel?
I don't have that number in front of me. I'd have to look that up.
Okay. That's my challenge because I have always tried to do that. And I guess it's the management dynamic that says, if that's the largest category of all your expenses, shouldn't you be on a timely basis tracking that and tracking the trends? What was it last year? What was it five years before? What was it 10 years before? Because this are the big trends that are the big challenges you've got to live with forever and ever and ever, particularly when it comes to personnel. And secondly, it gives you a wonderful statistic, if you want to call that, a metric, to then go to the League of California Cities or other cities to compare your dynamics and your trends with theirs. So you can get a feel for how are you managing these big picture items in relation to, I guess comparables. I know it's always hard to say what's a comparable city, but you can start getting those kinds of information on long-term trends. And I've not seen or do not understand from the website this kind of information. I, I couldn't find it. I, I know you do a very good job of tracking revenue and expenses per budget each year. That's very clear. But if I wanted to go back and find what percentage of your total revenues went to personnel in 19, well, in 2000, we won't go back that far. We won't go back to 1988, let me tell you. But the point is, it would give you a good trend to watch carefully and evolve as a, I am, I'm convinced a very valuable kind of a, a metric for long-term comparisons. And I don't know how involved you are with the League of California Cities, but I've always been a champion of the league because they are that organization that gives you this kind of information. They have, in my experience, and my experience is really dated now, but they have one of the most dedicated, capable staffs in California. And the interesting thing about the league, it lobbies on behalf of, of cities across the state, but in this wonderful environment of, of campaign finances these days, the league cannot offer any elected official, any kind of compensation. What they can offer them is research capability. And surprisingly enough, the Assembly and the State Center appreciate that and the league is renowned for that capability. So the point, I guess I'm trying to make, for goodness sakes, let's use the league for the kind of information we really need. It's free, well, I don't know what the dues are this year. How much do we pay for the league for dues? Okay. It's always, as I recall, modest amount for the services you can get from that organization that's very capable. But these long-term trends on these significant outlays can certainly help you do a lot more effective job of management and it would, hopefully through the website, give folks like me a little confidence that I understand what's happening in the long-term trends.
Thank you very much, Mayor Smith.
Thank you.
Is there any further response you have there to Ms. Mitz at this point? I know by department, from year to year, we certainly track salaries. What he's more interested in, I think, is an aggregation of it. And what I can't remember is whether in the CAFER, at some point in there in one of the many appendixes, there is in fact an accumulation of this type of information.
For salary benefits, there's not an accumulation in the CAFER. You are correct that in each, each budget under each, each department, it does say how much is designated for salary and benefits. We do not have anything which has aggregated the data, but I can definitely look into doing something like that.
Okay, great.
Just on that point, it's also sometimes confusing to, to track the trends with FTEs in the HR departments.
FTE?
Full-time employee.
Equivalent.
Equivalent, sorry. I'm glad you, it's important to track that too because I get questions all the time. Well, how many, how many employees did we have five years ago and how many do we have now? And I, I really have a difficult time trying to find that information to see what the trends are. There was a statement made that we hired, we hired like 20 something people or whatever and that's a, that gives a false impression that we've increased the FTE maybe 20 when that's not always the case. We may have lost folks and then rehired folks. So it's nice to, to look somewhere to figure out what those trends are in both of these areas that we're talking about.
I do believe the FTE is tracked by year in the, in the, in the CAFER and part of the reason for the increase, I think we're around 76.5, sticks in my mind, 75, 76, but there was an increase in the last year because we moved firefighters into the part-time category and that really accounted for the increase. But that certainly is tracked in the CAFER. All right.
I've got one. On all of that note, if there would be a possible way of actually tracking the regulatory impacts that we suffer from new laws and new regulations that, that cause us to increase our employees, that, I mean, 30 years ago, you know, you could do it with a staff of maybe 15 to 30 people, but with all the, the new regulations and state laws that have come into effect, I think that's why, you know, there's a, a big reason that, that the employee and staff have to raise. So I don't know if there's any way of actually tracking that, but I think it's, it's, would be a good comparison side by side.
That is something that I can look into. We might be able to get the information easier than, than we possibly think. We do hire a consultant every year. We have a contract with AK and Company and what they do is they do track all the new regulations that are put out there for us and they see where, where the federal or state government actually gets to reimburse the city. So we do get ongoing reimbursements for some of the things, definitely not everything that they regulatory put on us. But I can follow up with her and see if that's something that she has in her wheelhouse that she can just provide to us.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Just wanted to reiterate what I was saying before in the appropriate department, but working with the Finance Department has been a pleasure. They're extremely responsive to us. We work quite a bit with the sales tax information. We use the CAFER quite a bit just to look at our trends, to look at what's going on. The, what wasn't mentioned was the TID, the Tourist Improvement District that the city administers and especially Jennifer Weeks does a great job at getting those, those reports to us, showing us how our TOTs coming in, showing us how our trends are going. It's a very effective tool for us to use, so we really appreciate it. But we do work quite a bit with the Finance Department and you have a very good professional staff. Mandy's very responsive, so is Stephanie and working with April has been great. So we really appreciate that. Just in response to what you're just talking about with the city staff, I feel your pain when you talk about, you know, you have a lot of revenue going to staff, but at the same time, you know, you are a service. You know, there, you don't produce a product. You can do some infrastructure and things like that, but what you do as a city is you provide services and services is people and you've got some very qualified people and they deserve to be paid well and they deserve to have benefits. And so I think you've got, you know, when, when they say that the revenue is mainly staff, I think it's a, mostly it's an appropriate investment. And, and reiterating what the city manager said, very, very good qualified people in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Thank you.
We're focused on finance.
Finance. It was brought up. Street sweepers, $200,000. That's, and that's just to replace it. I'm, I'm assuming that there are all sorts of other costs associated with that. And I'm not opposed to street sweepers, but I, I do think if you're going to spend that kind of money, they should be effective. So is there going to be something in place that would make the curbsides available to the sweepers on the days that they go by? Because right now, I see them just kind of skirting around all the cars that are parked there and I wonder how effective they actually are if they can't actually sweep the street. That's my comment.
That's a good question and I know that the city of Napa, as was reported in the paper the other day, is moving to a system whereby they notify specific neighborhoods and streets of the days that their streets are going to be swept in an effort to cause folks to move their vehicles into driveways or away from the curbs so that the street sweeper can more efficiently, more effectively get through. And I'm sure that if I turned to our Public Works Department, they saw that and that's probably in the back of their minds as well. Am I right about that?
Correct.
All right. But great comment. All right. Any further City Council comment at this point? We'll go on to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My law firm has provided city attorney services to the city of St. Helena since late 2011. We essentially provide support to, to everybody in the city. We, in other words, we service and provide support for the city council, for the city manager, for all the executive staff and for all other employees at every level of the city. It's my sense that everybody in City Hall has an enormous workload every day with unusually and sometimes unreasonably short deadlines. And so it's my mission to be as responsive as possible and never hear anyone say it's held up with the city attorney, to try and get things turned around as quickly as possible. And that has been my goal since I've been city attorney here. Some of our achievements are, we provide legal advice in response to ongoing inquiries from the city council and staff. We attend executive staff meetings and planning commission meetings. As of about mid-year last year, it hasn't been as needed for the planning commission. I've been attending all of the planning commission meetings to try and assist in answering questions from the, the commission and staff at those meetings and address legal issues as they arise. We typically draft or assist in the development of all city ordinances, resolutions and agreements. We advise and assist staff in code enforcement matters on an ongoing basis. Code enforcement, sometimes we do them, we take the lead in that, sometimes we simply assist city staff in code enforcement. That can be complex and involve a variety of different compliance issues with city codes as well as with the common law and the constitution in, in respect to people's rights as the city asserts that, that people have not complied with city codes. We, we have tried, as Ms. Mitz suggested earlier, we've tried to regularize the city's public contracting system. When, when we arrived here, there was what I would characterize as, as an irregular contracting system. There was no template that was used and working with, with April over the years and the rest of city staff, we've really tried to, to transition to a system of templates such that eventually there will be very little need for city attorney support. And I think that's happening and I think it's been happening over the last year where there's been less and less reliance on my office. We're still doing it. I know that, that over the next couple of years, there's been, you know, some thought too about regularizing some of our, you know, public contract specifications and like that and we will be continuing to work with staff on that. Some of the other achievements, again, this is just an overview. We, we are involved in all claims involving the city, both where the city is a plaintiff and where a city, where the city is a defendant. We have negotiated settlement agreements related to the city's enforcement of its transient occupancy tax, TOT, and short-term rental ordinances for the property. occupancy tax, TOT, and short-term rental ordinances for the properties listed there. Typically, what happens in those situations is we become aware that there's a violation of the short-term rental laws, and what goes along with that, of course, is that when there are rentals happening without city permission, the city has not been receiving the taxes it is also owed. Even when a rental is illegal and in violation of the city's laws, the people who are renting illegally are still required to pay the tax owed to the city. So we have, both through litigation and through threat of litigation, have worked with property owners at a variety of different locations and have negotiated those settlements. That's an ongoing activity. As the city staff and our office become aware of short-term rental violations, we are always looking at those, and we have some litigation involving those in addition to these matters. It's the City Attorney's obligation, obviously, to manage all of the city's litigation and all claims against the city. These are examples of cases that we've been working on over the past year. Some are closed matters, some are still active, some involve people who are sitting in the audience this evening. But in any event, it's our effort to try and manage these cases to results that are favorable to the City Council and in compliance with the direction that we get from you as Over the past year, my office, and again, it's not just me, as with all of your various departments, I have what I call a St. Helena team that I use. Probably seven or eight of our firm's lawyers work with the city. You know, we assisted with all of the legal issues and ordinance drafting issues related to the water and wastewater rate setting and billing issues. Prior to that, there were also ordinance revisions that needed to be made with respect to the city's water regulations and drought regulations. My office was active in that. Erica Vega of my office was the attorney working chiefly on that. We assisted Sue Block, and Greg Murphy of my office assisted in the fairly complex affordable housing agreements related to the Our Town-St. Helena Brinkley Court and the Turley Flat projects. Those are still projects, particularly the Turley Flats project is still in process. We obviously draft on, really on an ongoing daily basis, memoranda and provide advice with respect to elections issues, Brown Act, Public Records Act. Few of the attorneys in my office have been active with the, as Ms. Black stated earlier, with what's really been an unusually heavy onslaught of Public Records Act requests to the city. And as the city is faced with responding to requests for, often voluminous requests for documents, what happens is the city needs to be sensitive to the fact that many of those documents need to be maintained confidential and privileged. For example, if there are documents relating to personnel records, employee personnel records, medical records, like that, obviously those are not subject to disclosure. Similarly, documents that reflect attorney-client advice are never provided. So that process requires some review, both as to responsiveness and as to privilege, and we've been active in that as well. We give advice as to the various conflict of interest laws in California that come up from time to time for members of the council and also for all of the city's staff and members of boards and commissions that are subject to California's various conflicts Goals and objectives, you know, we really do respond on an as-needed basis, so we can't predict or request what, you know, what our role will be. It's pretty much more of the same. We try to be responsive. We try to turn things around so that your very busy staff get their work done timely so that they can better serve the community. We are going to continue to assist in the implementation of the Calderon settlement and in the approval and the council's consideration of affordable housing opportunities. The Calderon settlement obviously imposes ongoing requirements and obligations on the city, and we need to be sensitive to those and aware of those as we go forward. We are assisting actively in the update to the city's general plan and related EIR. We are involved in assisting the city in its consideration and the development of the Adams Street RFPs. Mike Biddle of my office has been active with that. Stephen Velevis has worked with your staff with respect to the general plan update and other SEQA and land use issues. Mike Biddle also, it's not up here, was actively involved and worked in assisting the city clerk with the development of all of the documents necessary to get Measure D on the ballot and approved. We, Janet Summer provides chief advice and assistance with respect to labor and employment issues, and she was actively involved in the recruitment of your interim city manager, and I'm sure will be involved in your, in issues arising in connection with the recruitment of your new city manager. And we obviously continue on an ongoing basis to assist in managing and avoiding litigation and code enforcement efforts. In my view, anytime we get involved in litigation, it's a failure, and it's really important for us to try and find successful and creative ways consistent with the policy direction you as a council give to avoid litigation, and also to assist your staff in developing ways to avoid the kinds of liability issues that we might get into in the absence of appropriate legal advice. I'm available for any questions.
Any initial questions? Just one quick question of you. You say you're involved in all claims against the city. My understanding is that some types of claims go to REMF and don't go through your office, and of course, I'm now having a mental block as to what REMF stands for, other than the last part is insurance fund.
It's Redwood Empire.
Redwood Empire.
Right. And you're correct. We don't get involved generally in the REMF process. That's a, when I was referring to claims, there were non, what I call sort of bread and butter, public liability claims that REMF claims. It's an insurance pool, and they typically will handle those without assistance from the City Attorney.
All right. Is there any public comment here? I'll close public comment. Any further comment from council? All right, here's what I propose to do, which is to go through non-departmental and then take a five-minute break, which will inevitably be a 10-minute break, and then proceed through the rest of the agenda. I can see that folks are leaving the dice and elsewhere for breaks, and so we'll take a break after the non-departmental review for...
The, I think the slide presentation has planning and building next, so maybe this is the time for a break.
If I can add, the non-departmental in here was, is a mistake because non-departmental is kind of a catch-all, so we do not have a slide for non-departmental. That does not include salaries, benefits. That's a catch-all. It's typically your equipment, maintenance, things that are of use by all the different departments, so we're done with that section.
Well, I have to open the public comment. Anybody wish to comment on non-departmental? And I'll close the public comment, and I've gotten to the point where I thought we should take a break, if that's okay, and we'll come back at 6:00.[1123.74]
I don't know if I can talk to people like you.
Not tomorrow, though. Yeah.
If they went out.
Oh, yeah.
Please take your seats. We're ready to go. Are we all set? Can you please take your seats? Are we...we're miked up, ready to go? Okay, terrific. Well, we did that within about 10 minutes. That's pretty good for us. So, work to planning and building. Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor Galworth, members of the council and the public. Yes, so similar to all the other departments, my slides start with achievements. However, first, I'd just like to thank my staff, none of which are here tonight, but of course, you know, I'm just the person that gets to be up here and present all the achievements for the department. But really, my staff is instrumental in being able to get anything accomplished. The entire department is myself and three and a half other individuals, plus one consultant. But the city does get a lot of productivity out of our department, in my opinion. And it's interesting to point that a lot of the work that we do, it's not easily quantified. You know, we provide information to the general public, to real estate agents, to contractors, to design professionals, to city council members. I think I have a few information requests pending to provide you with some answers. We get everything from, you know, what's my zoning, or do I need a permit for this, all the way to much more complex projects. So, what can I do with my property, or how can I develop my property? How do I participate in this public process, those types of things? And ensuring, you know, strict compliance with federal, state, and local regulations through the review of these projects and answering these questions and providing that how to comply to all level of individuals, from the general public all the way to design professionals, is part of our jobs that we do every day, and also code enforcement. So, you know, we get a code enforcement complaint, we have to prioritize these based on our available time and resources and the severity of what may or may not be occurring. But it's a time consuming and legal proceeding that must be done correctly in order for it to reach success. And so, that's just some of the broader things that we do for the public that may not be able to be quantified in achievements. But I think it's important to recognize that the work that they do. So, a lot of the things we've done this year, we've updated several sections of the city code, as you're well aware of, primarily to address changes in the state law, but also to, for example, assist with the Brinkley Court project, our town St. Helena, due to a limitation in our noise ordinance. And then we do have some changes to the accessory dwelling units, that's the ADU up there, and that is in response to changes in state law. And that'll be coming before the planning commission and city council. The planning department processed almost 50 discretionary applications, including managing the completion of three initial studies. Those are the secret documents associated with development projects. We reviewed five short-term rental renewal applications and had two neighborhood meetings. We've updated five years' worth of housing element progress reports with the assistance of Ms. Bukowski, and that came before the council recently, and the commission. And then obviously, I have completion of the general plan draft EIR and general plan itself, as this fiscal year is not over yet, and I have committed to trying to get those documents completed. I actually anticipated having the general plan EIR published in April. However, the building department has had a complete turnover in our staff since October, and so hitting that milestone would be a little bit challenging. But we do anticipate getting that EIR out for public review in the near term. We also...so those are kind of the planning-focused achievements for the department. In the building division, we've processed over 600 building permits valued at $1.19.5 million, bringing in approximately $850,000 in revenue to the city, that's inclusive of impact fees. We implemented a process to streamline the review of simple building permits ahead of more complex ones. So, it's titled the Rapid Permit Process. We've hired and trained, or in the process of training, our new building permit technician. She came on in February and has been very successful in bringing up to speed very quickly and assisting us with some backlog that built up in her absence. And then we initiated 20 code enforcement cases, and these range from things like neighborhood blight to substandard living conditions. And most of these were resolved successfully, some of them resolutions ongoing. And we also assisted the city attorney's office in addressing four short-term rental violations and leading to successful prosecution of those, or settlement, I should say. And this is all achieved while maintaining an approximately 75% cost recovery. Our department is not an enterprise fund, as you're well aware. We are funded by the general fund. However, we bring in about 75% of our costs based on our fees and application costs that we charge. And 75%, I think, is actually fairly good. Industry standard is usually between 60 and 80%, and that somewhat depends on the philosophy of the council, when they set their fee study and how much they'd like to have development subsidize the day-to-day public questions that you get that you can't charge for, you know. As I mentioned in the initial beginning of my presentation, there's a lot of services we provide that you can't charge a fee for. And so, 75% cost recovery is the high end of the industry standard. And I would like to identify that we do continue to try to improve our customer service, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the website specifically, we are constantly adding expanded capacity to that, given the new format allows us to do so. Thank you, IT and Cappy. But so, we do, just as an example, that I believe we'll have a public-facing GIS link on the website, hopefully next week. So, people will be able to access a variety of information just from that GIS link. That's Global Information Systems. But essentially, it's mapping information. So, you can find out what's my zoning, what's my general plan designation, where are my water lines, those types of things will be available to the public. Moving on to goals and objectives. Obviously, completion of the 2035 general plan is the number one goal for my department, from my perspective. But the general plan itself provides a direction to make a number of revisions to existing policies, and those will include a comprehensive zoning code update and the creation of design guidelines. We're going to continue to support commission and council-directed initiatives, which we've been getting several of those recently. We're also going to work to continue to improve our code enforcement process, as was requested by the council at the last meeting. And we've been working with the city attorney's office on doing that over the last year. So, we hope to see some fruits of those labors coming for the council in the relatively near term. And then similar less technical elements, but of course, we will always work to support affordable housing here in the community, as well as economic development efforts. We're going to begin an internship program within the planning department. That was in our budget for '16, '17, and we're just now getting that rolling. We do anticipate, hopefully, having that help with some of the council-directed initiatives, depending on the skill sets of the applicants we receive. And then also, you know, we always seek to improve the experience for our customers. And my personal philosophy with government is that, you know, we're at a higher...there's a higher level of expectation in the services we provide because we have no competition. There's no other place to get a building permit. So, because of that, I hold my staff to fairly high levels of expectations with regards to their customer service. And then, as far as one of the other requests, I'm sorry, no, you went ahead, yeah. So, requests, obviously, we're going to increase, or requesting that the council increase the salary for the building official position in an effort to improve our recruitment, and that'll be going before the council at their next meeting. Similar to what Ms. Mitz talked about, there is a vehicle replacement fund. I'd like to put into my budget or contribute to the citywide budget, depending, as my department does have one vehicle that is aging and will need to be replaced at some time. Also, obviously, with some new staff, we'll need new training. And I'd really like to get our front counter staff very familiar with some of the more technical elements of the building code. And so, there's some training for them. I haven't identified a hard number, but it's not a significant increase, given the overall elements of my budget. Obviously, some dedicated code enforcement resources and funds would allow us to expand on the work we're doing. However, I will say, also within the '16, '17 budget was funds to work with a private investigator to expand our short-term rental enforcement efforts. And we have recently, I believe, found someone that's going to be able to satisfy that. So, we'll be implementing that portion of my budget and maybe coming back and asking for the council to reauthorize that amount. But that's intended to be a very relatively small investment, given the return we've been getting from those settlements, when we do eventually find these folks and force them to pay the back taxes that they owe, in addition to stopping their efforts. And then finally, some of the council and commission-directed staff assignments, looking for some prioritization of those. Typically, staff would work with the city manager's office to prioritize how staff's resources should be dedicated to these efforts. However, given the large number of items, there was a list that the commission had when I was first hired, and we've been chipping away at that, but we've also been adding to it, as has the council. And so, given that Mr. Purnell's on interim status, it may be appropriate to get direct input from the council in prioritizing the planning department efforts, and staff will be engaging with the council to do that in the near term in an effort to more directly implement the goals of the council as a body. So, that's my presentation. Generally, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any initial questions from council? Let me open the public hearing. Any comments at public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any further council comments at this point in time? Obviously, you've got a very big plate, and we all understand and respect that. And I think we all admire the way you go about trying to manage what is an impossible plate, to put it mildly. There we are.
The city council department also fills your pain with respect to being able to quantify its achievements. So, you're with good company.
All right, recreation. Ms. Arius?
Good evening, mayor and council.
You've got that green shirt on. Is that a green shirt?
No.
I'm slightly colorblind, but...
I argue with my wife. I think it's gray.
Vermont is the green...
She thinks...
Vermont is the Green Mountain State, you know that.
Yes. I should know that, huh? Well, probably my last time presenting to you guys, so I'm not sure if I'll have another opportunity. But I definitely want to thank you for your constant support to our department, the recreation department. It's been an honor to work with all of you. I'm sad I haven't been able to work with both of you. But it has been an honor to work with staff, city staff, and especially this amazing community. It's been a big part of my life and will always be my home. We've accomplished a lot in 14 years that I've been here, and I believe that and hope that you guys will continue to support the rec department forever. We had a lot of accomplishments, achievements. We'll start out. Once again, we hosted the two main community events for the city, the Fourth of July fireworks. Again, due to our commissioner, Kim Feeney, in two years, we were able to raise over $100,000 to provide two years of fireworks. And with the help of Public Works and the Parks Crew and the Fire Department, we were able to provide a fantastic show. More people attended. We definitely learned from the first one. And so, I hope it will continue for years to come. And we'll talk about a little later, the Harvest Festival and Pep Parade, as one of my commissioners I forgot to include. It was despite the rain. We had a great festival. We had more vendors. We had new nonprofits participating. Each nonprofit made more money than any year before, and we had such a great attendance despite the rain. It was quite the downpour, so I'm glad everybody got out just in time, because we had got sick from the downpour cleaning up. But both events were a huge success again, and numbers definitely increased in both of them. And it was a really teamwork effort. We continue to work with City of Napa. Because of our youth soccer with Napa United, it's been such a success that the City of Napa Rec Department now sees how important it is to do stuff throughout the valley, including Calistoga, St. Helena, and Yountville. So, this year, we added some programming with basketball and volleyball and adult softball, so I can only see it growing. We've also continued to work with the school district. We have two years now providing their enrichment programs. Last year, we only had about 200 and something participants, so we definitely increased to 300 this year. Classes including chess, coding, yoga, meditation, dance, it's been a very positive partnership and continue to do that. Moving on to our adult sports leagues. These are all organized leagues that we run. As you know, bocce is my favorite. We currently just took in 110 teams for our upcoming season. That's 1,500 weekly participants for a total of over 25,000 people using the bocce courts this summer. So, that's a big event. We've also were able to add fall bocce to last fall. We have an amazing bocce groomer, thank God, and...
No, he's on my team.
Yes. We were able to expand to fall, so we definitely have now seven months of bocce. We definitely were able to finish right before the rains came, so we had a fun fall season. With our adult softball, last summer, we had eight teams of men's, men teams, and this year, we have the same. 200 players, a total of 2,800 participants using Carpe Field. This year, we'll be adding a, what was, a tournament, the Napa Valley Softball Classic with Calistoga and Napa. So, this August will be our first annual, teams representing Calistoga, St. Helena, and Napa. So, it should be a good one, and hopefully, it becomes an annual event. Tennis, the USTA currently has 10 teams with us at Crane Park. 75 participants are signed up, a total of 3,900 using the tennis courts. This does not include the rest of the community that uses the tennis courts on a daily basis. Any sunny day, you'll see those courts full all day long, along with kids as well. Moving on to our youth sports. Youth soccer, as I've mentioned before, has become the most popular sport here in St. Helena, as well as through the valley. 27 teams this last fall, with almost 300 players weekly playing every week in St. Helena. It by far beats everybody. Little League averages 190, football has about 50, so 300, and that's a very diverse group. Almost equal numbers with girls and boys, so I'm very proud of that program. Basketball, we had 11 teams with 100 players. We run the older, the U-12 and up, so middle school age, as well as the little hoopsters, so three, four, and five-year-olds. We had 11 teams, a total of 1,100 participants this year. Youth volleyball is a girls' program. It's very hard to have female coaches, so I'm really proud of this partnership with PUC, women's volleyball team. They come down from the hill and coach our girls and also referee all of our games. So, they definitely mentor our women-girl athletes and prepare them for middle school and for high school volleyball. So, this is already four years that we partner up with PUC. T-ball, one of my favorites. If you're ever grumpy and just need to laugh or smile, that is a program. It's the cutest thing you'll ever see, trying to, those little ones, trying to learn how to bat and run. It's pretty comical. So, Jacob Miley, Mondays and Wednesdays, you'll get a good kick out of that. And it amazes me that every year, we have about 50, 55 kids out there every season, about 440 participants per season. And I would not be able to do these programs without volunteer coaches. As you know, I coordinate over 60-plus volunteer coaches. They take a lot of time and commitment to really coach our youth, and without them, there's no way I can do that. They keep coming and participating, so we're doing something right. Our summer camps, we had a very busy summer. Our day camp, our most, it's been a long time, we've had adventure day camp. It's run at Crane Park. They have access to the whole park. We had about 300 kids participate in last summer, along with some fun field trips to the zoo and ice skating and stuff like that. Specialty camps, 77, theater, dance, sport camps, our soccer, basketball. We had a very busy summer. So, during non-summer, the other classes that we have, the 40 weeks of the rest of the year, we had 684 attendees weekly, so we've added new karate classes, ballet, hip-hop, music for toddlers. Yesterday, you did not want to be in the Carnegie with the music jam, the tambourines and the drums and clarinets. I thought it was pretty loud, but it was, it's fun to hear that noise, and it's great to have, you know, over 27,000 kids using that Carnegie. So I love the noise. I love hearing the piano. I love kids coming up and down. We definitely need to fix that elevator. It's still broken, but it's a good exercise, everyone tells me, like, up and down the stairs. Our teen centers, since September through April, we had 1,000 walk-ins. I'll talk about that a little later. And thank you for adding that other supervisor position. It's a life-saving to this department, and I know that person will be huge, you know, it'll definitely help. And facility rentals, rec department, our department takes care of the Carnegie as well as all park reservations, and this year, we took almost 600 reservations for our parks. Our goals and objectives, this is one thing that I'm sad about and disappointed in myself because I continue the fight for a youth agreement with the school, and I hope that the department continues to fight, along with the new city manager. That is something we use the gyms, the fields, the classrooms, and it's a partnership that's very important for the survival of the department, so I urge you all to continue that fight that I was not able to complete. We also, we always continue to seek financial support. You know, we're not here to make a profit, but we're also here to provide quality programs to everybody in our city. I continue to provide high quality. If you know me well, I'm not about numbers. I'm more about the quality. It's very important to me to provide quality instructors that keep the kids engaged, that the parents know that they have a safe place to go, so that is always my top priority. And so I think that's why we have an amazing department, because we have those types of instructors working for us. Continue to restructure the teen center programming model. I've created a new programming committee for the teen center, so they will be providing feedback, so to different kind of programming happening at the teen center. So I hope that the new programming model for the center will come out in the next school year, 2017, 18. The requests. As you know, you've got all letters from our commissioners stating that they would need a break from fundraising. We are requesting that we cover half the cost of the Fourth of July fireworks. We currently have a little over $19,000 on hand for the fireworks, and so we need the other 20. This is something that I do need direction, because I do need to sign a contract with Valley Fireworks, and my department needs to start working on it, so if...
That's on our calendar for next Tuesday as an agendized item.
It is? So on Tuesday, you will approve or not?
We'll deal with it on Tuesday.
All right. Great. I thought it was you there giving me... Perfect.
It's on the consent calendar, too.
Oh, perfect. Even better. I know a lot of people will be very happy. We've currently also with the commissioners, we just did, we've worked on our park impact fees, and we came up with a few projects that we are going to work on and add to the CIP, and those are, one of them is the tennis courts. It's been a huge liability. We need to reconstruct all those courts. It's been about over 20 years that they have, the center courts have, need repair, and with the impact fees, it's, the total cost is $150,000. The commissioners are asking for the general fund for 35. They used 80,000 from the park impact fees account, and then they're also going to seek out from the tennis users and fundraising the other 35,000. So that is something on our wish list. Do you have any questions?
No. Any questions?
Thank you.
It's obvious. We all appreciate your tremendous service to our community over the last 14 years, and we all wish you the best, too, as you move to the Green Mountain State. Is there any public comment at this point? Yes, please.
Well, after the standing ovation, my comment is just a little bit redundant. I just wanted to thank you and the rest of the recreation people. When I first moved to this valley with two very, very young children, well, one in tow and the other on the way, it was the recreation department here that just really saved my life. And I think that all of the activities you do are so incredibly important to creating, maintaining, and building the community here. So I hope that the council continues to give the recreation department their full support. And I just want to say that the pet parade is an all-time favorite of mine. It took me four years to finally win the grand prize.
I just, again, want to add to the, applaud. My name's Julie Spencer. I'm the director at Rianda House. And both for the rec department as well as the library, I just want to say to you all to be extra proud of both these folks and how they conduct themselves and their spirit of collaboration in the community to make our programs more engaging, inspiring, and delight the public. Both of their departments come to our program meetings with the idea of avoiding duplication and just making better programs, and it's because of their attitudes. And so I hope when you, how can we duplicate you? That'll be tough, but when you do interview for somebody, think, please keep that in mind, that the collaborative efforts in their community are really important. They go so far in things you can't really find in a budget, but it really, it really makes up what we're about, so bravo.
I, too, want to thank Heidi so much, because truly, without her work and what she's done for our community, I'm raising my two boys here, and what she's done really has taken my boys and their achievements in all of the sports that they've, all the programs she's put them in. It's just been amazing, and raising my kids here would not have been the same without having Heidi here, and she's going to be terribly miserable. I'm glad they're older and they're not in T-ball anymore.
Very good.
And I also want to say the fireworks. I am a two-year-going purchaser of one of the tennis courts. I also have a tennis player, so I love the tennis courts as well, but I and the Beck families have bought the courts for two years, and we've had the most fun family parties ever with those fireworks above our heads. Truly, they were the most memorable moments of my kids, and all of those families, over 300 of us gathered with our lawn chairs and our dinners, and we sat there with our town having this show above us, above our Crane Park, and truly was something that was magical, and I hope, I hope, I hope that it's on that agenda on Tuesday, and I'll be back with hopefully more kids to stand tall and help you guys support it. Thank you so much.
Hi, Tracy Smith, private citizen. I grew up in St. Helena, so community events are really important to me. I've also been a Parks and Rec Commissioner for five years now, which is a really long time, and different council members and mayors is part of it, and I just want to thank you all for your support over the years. I think we've done a lot, the Stephen McCollum Park, the last two years, taking on the pet parade, the Harvest Festival, and the fireworks. Most importantly, Heidi knows how important she is to Parks and Rec. She's there every meeting. She's there on the weekends. She's there with us all the time, so whoever replaces her, you know, they're going to have big shoes to fill, and she's always backed us up. One of the big things is the fireworks, and, you know, I think taking a break from fundraising is not going to happen. We're going to continue to fundraise year-round to make it happen, but us as commissioners, we can't do it alone. We need the city to help support us, and we'll continue to fundraise so that the money's there, but it's just $40,000 every year to raise with this community does get tough because there are so many other things that need people to donate to them over the years, so we want to continue to help. We just want the help of the city with that. In addition to that, you know, talking about the tennis courts, we have such a diverse group as part of the Parks and Rec Commission, age-wise, backgrounds, kids, married, dogs, our employment, things like that. So when we make a recommendation to council or ask for something, it's not something that we do lightly as a group. It's something that we've already sat there and had a two-hour conversation about, gone back and forth with the positives and negatives, and we feel like what we come up with is something universal that is there for everyone in the community, and we've all spoke our piece on different sides and then really come up with an idea that we think is a recommendation. And so we just want to hope that the council takes those very seriously when we do bring them up over the future, because we volunteer a lot of our time. The pet parade, I do personally with the team of the commissioner, and I can tell you, I put in at least 50 hours during September and October leading up to that, along with my other job, and that is at a winery during harvest. So we do do a lot, and so we do wish for the support of council moving forward for everything that we are trying to do to make a community and do better for the city. So thank you very much, and Heidi, I am going to deeply miss you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment with respect to recreation? Any further city council comment?
I'd just like to say one thing. I haven't had the opportunity to really take advantage of the recreation department myself, but it seems to me it's the perfect example of excellent community service, but it's also based on a model of using volunteers, partnerships, joint use agreements, hopefully. And I think we need to begin to think that way, you know, how to leverage what we have in the community so that we can make the most out of the people who live here and the resources that we have that can be put together across jurisdictions. I mean, I can't say enough about how much you do with so little and how excellent the service is. Thank you.
Mr. Osmond?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to back that up. Just looking at how many people you serve, and I'm going to start crying here. What you've created here is just incredible for the community, and Heidi, you're going to be deeply missed, and wish you the best, and just thank you for being a gift to our town and really, you know, solidifying this program, and then thank you for, you know, finding a way to help. You've left us with something wonderful that we'll carry on, so thank you.
Any further council comment at this point? As I mentioned, the fireworks is on our consent calendar next week. Of course, any member of the council or the public can take it off the consent calendar, but it is on the consent calendar as projected. Speaking strictly for myself, I'm quite sympathetic to the $35,000 request for the tennis courts, fundamentally because there is broad usage by the community. Ms. Cobristine, I think, captured some of my thoughts there. It's very well supported, and then also, it's in the context of basically a match, and that's very important to me as well. So at least in terms of council direction from the mayor, that's his thinking, but that's just one out of five. All right, let's go on to the library.
Heidi's going to be a hard act to follow. The library's had a busy year also. We had 114 people walk through our front doors. We lent over 235,000 items to St. Helena customers. We sent an additional 43,000 to our partners in the Splash Consortium. In return, we got 20,700 items from them, and due to budget restraints, our materials budget having some cuts because of funding, last year, we sent to Splash Libraries 59,000. So we've dropped the amount that we're sending, and we've increased how much we're getting back from Splash. Last year, we received 11,000 items. The library held over 550 programs with over 10,000 attendees. This is all possible due to Friends and Foundation. They fund all of our programming. They also pay for all of the part-time staff at the library, and this part-time staff allows full-time people like Leslie, our children's librarian, to go out to schools to give storytimes. For Mari, our bilingual librarian, to do Spanish or bilingual storytimes at Farmer's Market and other events. It's, those part-time people are very valuable to the library. This year, we had a number of staff training opportunities. This involved cross-training. It included database refresher training on the resources that we offer our community, professional development. One of those was collection development. We have more staff involved in, to utilize their part, their time in helping all the departments out. We created a pocket library collection disaster policy. A lot of it is just phone numbers of people to call when things go bad, but it let us prioritize the priorities of our collections in the library and making sure that if there were obvious things that needed, that could lead to a disaster, that we took care of that. Last year, we had 38 volunteer participants at the library. They donated over 1,300 hours, so volunteers are a part and part of the library. We expanded our youth volunteer program to better meet the needs of the library and also our young volunteers. A lot of them are doing it for community service for school. We also entered in a contract with Khalifa, which is a consortium of California public libraries. We will be getting our internet through them. It's one gigabyte, which is pretty fast. Hopefully, it should be a lot faster than what we have now, and we have completed a number of improvements on the library's website this year. And we also continue, plan to do that next year, too, to continue better functionality and also to timely add resources that the community can use. Next year, we also hope to continue to provide excellent customer service to the community. We hope to continue to provide quality programming that entertains, engages, and educates, and we hope to continue to create greater efficiencies, greater efficiencies and timeliness in cross-training and in staffing among departments. We do a lot of people helping other people in other departments, children's and adult, adult and children's. We hope to continue working with other city departments and other outside organizations to strengthen these partnerships. This year, we've worked with RLS Museum for a number of programs, coordinating with Rianda House in our schedules. We had Mari go to the high school for our program, and we've also had a wild St. Helena series with a number of environmental organizations in the valley. The attendance of the Still Trout and Works Creek was a great success, so it's, we're hoping to strengthen that again this year. Next year's goals are to also complete the library's transition to this new broadband service and hopefully fix our internal connection issues. We have a great connection into the library, but it would be really bad if that connection did not get to our public computers and our users, so cabling is a major issue. We also hope to evaluate the library's marketing of its programs and its services to the community, and we also hope to transition and move some of our part-time employees from Friends and Foundation grants to city funding. The additional staff hours, Friends and Foundation has been a static amount. Unfortunately, there's been an increase in the minimum wage. The minimum wage is the basis for our part-time employees, and so we've had the same... of its programs and its services to the community. And we also hope to transition and move some of our part-time employees from Friends and Foundation grants to city funding. The additional staff hours, Friends and Foundation has been a static amount. Unfortunately, there's been an increase in the minimum wage. The minimum wage is the basis for our part-time employees. And so, we've had the same, pot is probably not the right way to describe it, but the same amount of money with less hours that our staff can work using that money. And so, we've kept the library open 45 hours a week, but it is becoming a strain for sometimes staffing. We want to have adequate staff. We also want to be safe. It's a large building, and you can't have less than three people at a time there. So, it does get difficult. We also, part of our cabling issue, we got an estimate, it's 40,000, to fix inside the building. However, we do have a grant that's coming up. It's a matching grant. The matching amount is 20,000. So, between the 20,000 of the grant and 20,000 from the city, we would be able to fix that issue. We also have some furniture that needs fixing. So, structurally, it's good. Unfortunately, the fabric hasn't held up. After 15 years, those things happen. So, we're hoping to fix those chairs in the wine library that are looking, that have seen better days. And then, that leads to our unmet needs. Everybody always wonders when we'll have more hours open. Unfortunately, that's really tough to do when we're already stretched at 45. And of course, space is always an issue. If you've been to some of our programs, it can get pretty packed in there. Children's, there's always kids playing and not nearly enough room, sorry, not nearly enough room sometimes. And if you've been to a program and seen the children's, it's hard to find a quiet spot sometime in the library. And we always feel really bad for those students who want to study or have a group study session, and there's no place they can really go. So, we find them corners of the library, but one of these days, it would be definitely nice to let them have a little more room. So, I don't know if you have any questions.
All right. Any initial questions from council? Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment at public hearing? Let me close the public hearing. Obviously, the library is a very impressive operation, and we all appreciate what you do. There's some tough choices, I think, that the council's going to face here. All right.
I'd also just like to back that up and support that, that the library is critical, and thank you for all you do.
Okay, that brings us to our fire chief, Chief Sorensen.
Mr. Mayor, council. Achievements for '16 and '17. We responded to six strike teams in California, including the Subrianas, the Tully, and the Canyon fires, for a total of 2,287 firefighting hours. We worked with the fire finance department to set up the equipment replacement fund. That's money received from the strike teams. We charge per hour for the engines. So, April has a fund set aside to funnel that money into a fund so we can actually use it for replacement. This is 15 and 16 seasons was totaled 121,000. So, we also entered in an agreement with the wastewater treatment plant for the property for the training ground. And you brought up before how much fire engines cost. On the low end, about 550, 550,000. And on the high end, the ladder truck, if you replaced it today, it would be 1.4 million. And it has about seven years left on it until they start to have stress cracks. But that doesn't have to be replaced until it's taken out of service by the ladder person that comes to certify the ladder. So, yeah, that is a lot of money. We responded to 851 fire calls in 2016. That's up by 100. And these are all the different types. Pick-up and put-back is one is where you see good intent, what's that, 30 percent? There's a lot of false alarms that's grouped into there. And pick-up, people that put them back into bed, that's one of the top calls right there. 76 percent is in the city, 20 percent in the county, and the mutual aid would be outside of our county contract area, which is, the contract area is from the city limits in the south to Whitehall Lane to the north to Big Tree Road, in a circle all the way to the back of Con Valley, all the way to the top of Spring Mountain at the county line with Sonoma. That's our contract area. Okay. Achievements continued. We bought 26 self-contained breeding apparatus from the 2016 lobster feed, totaled 186,000. That was paid cash right from the association, so it never had to hit the budget. We conducted the EOC training, which is Emergency Operating Center. We reviewed the service model of the fire department, modernized and the transition of annual fire inspection programs to a paperless system. Another achievement that just happened a few weeks ago was the 2017 lobster feed. The net profit, biggest ever, exceeded 250,000. Modern, another goals and objectives, modernize and implement customer incident management software to better track and report incidents, training, and statistics. We're running on a 1996 version right now. Continue to improve infrastructure with the training facilities located at the wastewater treatment plant. We're working on a problem with daytime response. Our firefighters, we lost five, got other jobs, what have you. And currently, we have approximately three firefighters that are close to the firehouse within five minutes. We have three career firefighters that come and go depending on what their shift are. They work two days a shift, and then they're off for four, and then back on to two. So, then they're around as well. But most of our daytime is Sutter Home employees that cannot get to the firehouse because of the light at Grayson, put a big damper on the response. And we just don't have those firefighters. But come four or five o'clock in the afternoon, then all of them return from their jobs, and we're back to normal. So, there is a property available on Dowdell to rent. Would be Station Two. It would just have one vehicle there. And we're working with NOAA, trying to get the use permit to change to help that daytime. So, Sutter Home would just go quarter mile to Dowdell and respond. Replace bay doors. They're 20 years old. We got twice as long as we did out of American Canyons, who got 10 years out of their doors. Our doors open over 1,000 cycles a year, and you'd think that front doors are not very expensive, but it's about 120,000 for four doors. That's only half the doors. So, the firefighters are considering purchasing some of the funds, help the city with that with the lobster feed proceeds. Continued, hire six more firefighters to bring the total number to 27, which is a healthy number, 30 being full. Increase the fire chief position to two days a week. I'm currently one day a week. Retrofit the water tender with funds from the lobster feed. We're getting those quotes in now. That'll be 100 percent funded by the lobster feed, is what we propose. Purchase 511 tactical coats for high visibility. That was 7,000, completely paid for by the lobster feed. And then, our request is the annual lease and utilities on Station Two would be 20,000 a year. Purchase a radio repeater. This helps the firefighters get out in areas, Taplin Road, Spring Mountain Road. The portable radio talks to the fire engine, and then it sends out at a higher wattage. So, we actually can communicate. Radio replacement, 20,000. Fire hose replacement, 30,000. That brings us up to a full complement where we should be. And then, replace the front doors. I said, that says 110. It's, the quote came in today at 120, so that's a little low. Okay? And then, the continued, increase the firehouse, fire marshal hours, one additional. And there's a typo there. It's 21,000, not 11,200. And then, the fire chief, that's what my pay is for one day a week, but I do a little bit more than one day a week. And do you have any questions?
Okay. I have just one initial question. It went back to, if I can find it, the word "to date," dealing with the reimbursement. The question I had was whether you were anticipating more reimbursement. The number you provided was the number "to date."
On?
This was on 2016, 2017. Achievements, work with the finance department to set up a equipment repair replacement fund. The money received from strike teams received 121,000 to date. Is there an amount outstanding?
No, 15, 16 seasons. And then, we're getting into another season, and then it'll be, there'll be more every season, if there's strike teams. Maybe I should have worded that. That's 15 and 16 seasons. And the money comes in, it takes almost a year to wrangle it all in from state and the feds.
I see. So, you may have earned some in the last half of 2016, but it hasn't come in yet?
Yes.
Okay.
It takes sometimes a year.
Okay. That was my confusion. So, any other initial questions? It's a big and important list here. Let me open it to public.
I had something.
Oh, sure.
I just, in the last couple of months, have seen how much the volunteer fire department does, including raising their own funds, which is pretty incredible. So, you know, figuring out how we can support and help as much as we can, I think, is what we should think about. Because just seeing what the lobster feed was able to pull in, and then you do that by yourself, it's amazing. So, thank you.
We got help from Cal Fire came the engine from up Big Tree Road, and Calisoga firefighters came to help us. And every firefighter, every St. Helena firefighter was there. There was nobody absent, and you were there.
But it was amazing. It was just amazing to see the kind of effort, volunteer effort from a volunteer fire department doing the volunteer fundraising. So, however we can support. Thank you.
I think everyone on this bias was there.
I, you're right. Noah was there.
Good observation.
Thank you.
Nothing public, okay?
All right. That gets us to.
Did you call for a public comment?
I did.
Okay.
At least I believe I did.
I heard you too, sir.
Okay. That gets us to the police department.
I just want to say.
Steve and Bowden, yeah.
I was talking to Director Mitz earlier, and I wanted to, yeah. It was nice to see the fire department go first, but it might be the only time all year they showed up before the police department, so. That's for all the donut jokes.
We'll strike both comments from the record.
So, thank you for this opportunity. So, 2016, '17, I never know whether or not to throw statistics up there, so I don't throw numbers up there. We write tickets, we arrest people, that kind of stuff. I don't think those are the kind of numbers that belong on there. So, I didn't put any, but the officers were outright in a lot of tickets and arresting the bad guys. In addition to that, we were able to, with your help, replace three of our aging patrol vehicles, two brand-new vehicles and one that we got from the fire department. It was, had about 50,000 miles on it, and it's become our mobile command vehicle, our incident command vehicle. So, that was much appreciated. We were able to start what we call the Offer Up program. It's not fully in place yet, but we've begun getting it into place. And what that is, a program that allows people that buy things on the internet to have a place to meet with the seller, or people that are selling to meet with the buyer, where they can make the exchange safely and under video surveillance so that they can feel confident that they're not about to get robbed by somebody pulling a scam. So, that's a program that we're offering. The software is not quite working correctly for the video portion of it yet, so we haven't really advertised that yet, but that program should be up and running. Public Works has been really on top of trying to get that going for us.
And when you say "safe exchanges," what is being exchanged?
Cash for merchandise, typically.
Okay.
And what it can also be used for, it's not the intent, but it's an unintended consequence, is that you can exchange, if you have parents that can't get along, divorced parents that are exchanging children. They already use our lobby to exchange kids on the weekend or whatever. And now, it'll be, in addition to a warm, safe place to wait, it'll also be under video surveillance. That program was started and funded entirely through a donation from a company that I made contact with at a conference that I went to. They provided all the equipment. Public Works provided all the man-hours, but they provided all the equipment. We also started a pharmaceutical drop-off program. We started with a garbage can with a hole in the lid that we locked down with a couple of gun locks and hopefully, and hoped that it didn't disappear from our lobby. And I can say, actually, as of yesterday, the St. Helena Rotary fully funded a permanent pharmaceutical drop-off facility for us. It'll be mounted in the concrete in front of the police department. They paid for the entire thing, I believe, with about a $1,500 grant. And we just finally, yesterday, got all the decals and stickers and stuff on it. But it'll be a permanent location for city residents to come in and drop off any of their used pharmaceuticals that they don't want to keep. And we can dispose of it safely, keeping it out of the water systems and not going down the toilets. So, I believe it's being installed tomorrow. The concrete's already been poured, and the Public Works staff was, I think they said today they were going to mount it tomorrow. So, we have that. No more.
Alan, did he say the Rotary Club? I didn't quite hear him. Did he say Rotary Club? Wanted to make sure.
He did.
Okay. Shots fired.
St. Helena Rotary Club.
The St. Helena Rotary Club, yes, yes. The Rotary Club of St. Helena. And I believe, I was going to try to come on Tuesday to the council to make this presentation, but I can't be here Tuesday. So, I'm glad I had the opportunity to say something today. We also filled two of our vacant patrol positions. We had two officers leave for various reasons. One of the positions was open for quite a while. We were able to fill that. And then one retired in December. And with your help, we were able to actually hire that person to replace the retiring officer before they actually left, which kept us from having a vacancy for several months while we tried to find a new officer. And that transition went seamlessly. The new officer filled right into the opening, and we didn't miss a beat. So, thank you for that. We also filled one of our dispatch vacancies. That position took about nine months to fill. No, no, five months to fill, I'm sorry. And so, we were grateful to get that person back on because when we're down a dispatcher, our community service officer is not on the street. She's dispatching. And that's an impact on her. It's an impact on the department. It's an impact on the city because she's not doing her job. We created two new per-dm dispatch positions, and we're using them to their full extent. We have a limit on the number of hours that we can use them based on hiring or employment laws. And so, we are actually maximizing the number of hours that we can use and could actually probably use another one very easily. Those positions are part-time with no benefits and hopefully not temporary. The other thing that we did as part of the Offer Up program is that we were able to enhance the video surveillance system in our lobby and out in front of the police department, again with the cameras that were donated from that Offer Up program. And I'm not sure why we didn't have a camera in our lobby. We have two outside the back door. We have four inside the building watching us, but we didn't have any outside. So, now, we have one in the lobby, and we have one outside the front door, watching Noah. And then, one thing that wasn't on there is that we filled our vacant lieutenant position. It was open for a little over a year, and we were able to fill it in September. Goals and objectives, every year is conducted department inspection. That'll be on there every year. We just make sure our equipment's up to specs, and nobody's running around with old stuff. One of the things that we figured out was that we all had old vests, and you were nice enough to replace our vest for the entire department this year. Maybe that should have been an objective for last year. We'd like to replace one of the new vehicles, or one of the old vehicles. We have two that are still old. The canine officer doesn't want to give up his because he's outfitted it over the last six years the way he wants it. But the other one is even older than that one. It's got 96,000 miles on it, I think, falling apart. And so, we would like to replace that. And as Director Mitz said, that that should probably be involved in some sort of a sinking fund and at least looked at annually, if not acted on. And as, my thunder was stolen. We are creating a volunteer program. It will come to you in May, I believe, the May 9 council meeting to talk about that program. Officer Peterson, Steve Peterson, has been trying to get that program underway for a couple of years and for various reasons. And because of changeover and things, it just hasn't happened. But he's got a very well-outlined and extensive program to bring in senior volunteers to the department to help us with all kinds of things. the department, to help us with all kinds of things. I don't want to get into the whole list today, but there's all kinds of administrative things that they can do, as well as stuff out on the street to help alleviate some of the strain from the officers and the community service officer. So we're looking forward to presenting that to you. And hopefully, having that, in addition to funded, have it staffed and in service in, I believe, September with training. This is a holdover from last year. We want to finish the interview room and equip it. We ran into a snag, and so I believe we're waiting on a contract, and then we'll have somebody to draw a hole in the wall, and we'll be able to expand the room, and then we will have, we'll have a proper interview room, hopefully, very soon. Completing evidence audit, that's, again, an annual thing. That's something that the police chief has to do, just to make sure that our records are maintained properly in the evidence room. It's just something that's important to do, to make sure, not that you suspect anything is wrong, or that anybody's doing anything wrong, but just to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, because anything that'll get you in trouble in a hurry, it's missing or improperly recorded evidence, so. I want to implement a...
Let me stop you there. In terms of what you're keeping in the evidence room, how long do you keep the evidence in the room? Is there a point when a case is closed out, and you can discard the evidence? How does that work?
It depends on what it is, and what the type of case was, and whether or not the case was solved and/or adjudicated in court. If all those things, if it's been adjudicated, you either give the evidence back to the rightful owner, or you destroy it. If it's contraband, it gets destroyed. If the case hasn't been adjudicated, and it's specific types of cases, we keep it forever. The town had a homicide in 2004. We've still got evidence from the homicide, because the suspect's still on the loose, so.
But the important point here is that all that has to be properly recorded and tracked?
Correct. We have to be able to locate it. If somebody says, "I want item X from case whatever in 2004," we have to know exactly where it is and be able to pull it. I want to implement a body-worn camera program, and it's kind of something that I intended to bring to council a little earlier, but before this meeting, but it just didn't work out in my favor. But I will be coming back to you with it, and I'll get to you in the next slide. I'll talk a little bit more about the financing, but it's not something that there's been a big clamor for in this town, but I think if you're watching the regional and national news, I think we can make a case for the importance of it, not just for the general public, but for the officers as well. And I can give a couple of examples of audio recordings that have helped mitigate complaints against officers that we've had, just in my two years as the chief. And the cameras really would take that a little further and make it a little easier. Want to create a fifth dispatcher position. I think I could talk about that all night, and I'll go on, on the next slide, I'll go on a little bit about the money, but we've got four off, four dispatchers working four shifts, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so when there's an absence, you feel it. The dispatchers feel it, because they either work overtime to cover it, or the community service officer comes in off the street to cover it. Community service officer's not on the street, nobody's writing parking tickets, nobody is working the evidence, that's her job, she's the evidence technician and parking. And so she's having to do evidence, working graveyard, dispatching, and trying to maintain the evidence in property room. And then I would like to provide ongoing simunitions training. Simunitions, and that's not a typo. Simunitions is a play on the word simulated ammunition. We've done training with that in the past, when we borrowed it from the Sheriff's Department, and we want to get our own equipment, so we don't have to borrow it, so we can train when and where and how we feel it's the best for us, and in the scenarios that we want to use it in. Let me go to the next. So the dispatcher position, if we bring in a new dispatcher at the bottom step, with the complete with benefits, is roughly $80,000 a year. Right now, like I said, we're using two per diem dispatchers. I actually have a third one that comes in one day every other week, to pick up the little bit of slack that we couldn't cover with the two that we had. And so I'm using technically three per diem dispatchers to cover one position, and then my CSO to cover the other position. I have two dispatchers out on long-term disability right now, two out of four. And so without another body to use, I've got everybody strained to the limit. With the CSO working dispatch and the per diems working dispatch, they're working all the hours they can work legally, and the per diems. And one of my full-time dispatchers calls in sick, I have to bring the CSO, who's not even a dispatcher, in on overtime to dispatch on graveyard. It's really hard to get four people to work four shifts and not ever take a day off, so. So that's something that would really take the strain off, it would eliminate a huge chunk of our overtime budget. It would also allow me to create a full-time records dispatch supervisor, to maintain our records, to make sure that our public records acts, act requests are being responded to properly, to make sure that the dispatchers are getting the training they need, and also to allow them to take leave, for whatever reason, without having to constantly hit the overtime budget. Wireless panic button for City Hall. We talked about this, I guess, a year and a half ago or so. I looked into it, it's a lot more expensive than I thought it was going to be, and we talked about getting a wireless doorbell, which, you know, might sound funny, but it actually would work, except that if you're not standing at the counter where the doorbell button is, when the problem comes over the countertop, you can't get to the button to push it. So you really need something that's where you are, and so something that is a wireless lanyard that you wear around your neck, or a bracelet, or something that you can have on you. And if you're working the front counter, when a problem comes in the front door and leaps our three-foot countertop, you can run and push the button at the same time, and an alarm would go off in dispatch. And that would be able to be passed around from whoever is covering the front desk, because it's not always the people that are sitting at the front desk. Sometimes it's the people in finance, sometimes it's the city clerk, you know, it just depends on who's there. And so this would allow some measure of, at least, a quicker response, because you can't always get to a phone to dial 911 either. The challenge we have with them is that, when we looked into them, they have to be run on a repeater because of our cinder block and concrete walls. They can't run direct lines from City Hall front counter to the police department front counter. It's got to be wireless, and it's got to go around a couple of corners, so that's the reason for the little bit elevated cost on that. I was surprised myself when we looked up the cost. The senior volunteer program, just the startup costs, we need to give uniforms, we need to train them. We actually have a pretty extensive, what we think is an extensive training program, but there's some cost involved in that. We need to rehab one of our old, old patrol cars, because they're going to need to be able to drive around to do things like traffic control, or things that, you know, during parades, that kind of stuff. And so we think we can get it up and running with 10 volunteers, completely staffed and trained, for about 4,000. And then there would be some ongoing cost every year that would be, I believe, about 3,000, because we anticipate bringing in new volunteers as other ones fall out, and continuing the training every year, and that kind of stuff. Patrol car cost, as we know, it's approximately $40,000 to buy one off the state bid and get it completely outfitted for patrol purposes, slightly cheaper for an admin car, but to put all the lights and the cage and everything on, it's a little bit more expensive. And then the body-worn camera program, that cost is not actually, would not actually be this year. I have a grant that I can pay for the entire startup cost of the program, including equipment, that would cover the first year of maintenance and, not insurance, not the right word, warranty. That would be an ongoing cost. It's $6,000 every year to maintain the program, to maintain the records in the cloud, and to continue having software maintenance, and then any training that comes along with that. The camera program itself, if the camera breaks, they replace it for free. If they come out with a newer model, they replace our older ones with the newer ones for free. It's all part of that annual $6,000 fee. I think that's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Who is the granting authority on the camera?
It's a good question, and I actually got it for so long ago, I believe it's, thank you, State of California. I could give you the exact...
No, that, no...
The SCC?
Yes, sir.
So the Bureau of State Corrections?
That's fine. It's the state, not the federal government. That's good, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we already have that money in hand.
Okay, good.
I've been holding on to it, but the annual would have to come from us.
All right. Any initial questions from council?
I have something. I met recently with the chief, and I was really impressed with the forward-thinking ideas and the community-sensitive approach that I think we have here. The volunteer program, I think, is great, and that providing a safe place for interactions is, I think, is a real service to the community, to know about that. And then the pharmaceutical drop-off was something that a nonprofit called Clean Water Action brought up to me, I don't know, about two months ago, and then to find that our police department was one step ahead and already doing it was incredible. And what it does is that, when people want to get rid of these pharmaceuticals, oftentimes they flush them, and they get into the water. And so this is why Clean Water Action was concerned. And it was just great that you guys were already doing that. So I think that that's great. I think that the other thing is, I made a visit to the police station recently, and the realization is that it's time for a new police station. That's something that's, it's not on here, and it's a much bigger project, but I think it's something we all have to, as a community, consider. It's really time to create a workspace that's clean and safe, and supports this group that does so much for the community. So just wanted to thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. The pharmaceutical drop-off, just to give him his due, was entirely spearheaded by Phil Bianco.
Oh, great, okay.
Took the reins, took the idea, and ran it all himself, so.
Okay, very good. All right, let me, is there any public comment? Yes, Ms. Minett?
Well, I moved here in 1976, so I've been here for 41 years. And in that time, I'll just say, I've had two car break-ins, a prowler in the house, and some other incidents, but I've always, even when I've been ready to move out of St. Helena for one reason or another, it's like, no. I would never find a place that had the police department that St. Helena has, and I would never find a place in which I felt so safe. And I know that I can call, and I'll get as immediate as possible response, always, consistently, and caring, sensitive responses, I guess, I can't think of a different word, always from them. And I, to me, this is one of the main reasons to live in St. Helena, is for this wonderful police department, so I'm hoping you'll feel generous toward them.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Any other council discussion? I might add, with respect to dispatch, and this came up the other day, we had a significant water leak. I learned about it right away. It was on a city holiday, and the obvious answer was to call Police Dispatch. The point of it being that Police Dispatch handles not just emergencies that people perceive as police emergencies, but they handle emergencies with respect to, for example, our water system that tends to have its issues at most inopportune times. And that was a significant leak, and Public Works got right on it. I think it took them about 10 hours to deal with it, it was a major problem, but Police Dispatch was there at the very beginning, mobilizing the water department. So I just wanted to make the broader point, that dispatch handles more than just police emergencies. Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
See, you have pictures.
Good evening.
Oh, Public Works.
Want me to wait? Yes, we do.
Oh, we do.
First off, I wanted to start with that this packet here wouldn't be here with me tonight without the incredible staff that's in Public Works, the managers and the supervisors that provided the comprehensive list, and Director Mitz helping me streamline a lot. If I put this all in here, probably twice the size of this packet, that's how many items of either to-do and/or achieved this past year. That's just how much Public Works does, and we just wanted to try to take the highlights of those, so you wouldn't be here all night. So with that, I'll start with the administration side of Public Works, and the 2016-17 achievements. Wanted to commend the Public Works crews responding to numerous incidents during the storms this season. I don't know if everyone's gotten the announcement, but it looked like we had the second-highest rainfall since the 1895-96 winter season, so...
Give it a further chance.
It's written pretty hard.
By the way, just for the, for people viewing us here, we have our acting Public Works Director, Erica Smithies. She's relatively new, wonderful addition to our city staff, but Mr. Palmer is no longer with us, and that's why Ms. Smithies is leading this discussion.
Thank you. There was numerous down trees, sandbags, coordination between agencies for various road closures and flooded streets this year, but miraculously, the city fared very well this year. I think the damages that were approximately $20,000 or less, so the city's not seeking reimbursement from federal or state, because it'd be probably more staff work trying to get those reimbursements than it'd be worth. And most of those items were achieved during normal business hours, some of them were outside, but it was about 50/50. Other big achievements this year were completing, anticipating completing the ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan, completing the water and wastewater leak study with finances assistance, completing the Pope Street Bightling Project, it's starting within a week, completing the wastewater treatment feasibility study, we're anticipating May 1. Completing flood wall levy maintenance, working with Caltrans to complete the State Road 29 channelization project, which includes the Grayson signalization. Completing the Mitchell Street Sidewalk Project, there's a photo there. The 2016 Slurry Seal Pavement Management Project. Goals and objectives are completing the Charter Oak and Allison Avenue Overlay Project. Pre-construction meeting, as soon as we get contracts signed, will be scheduled in a few weeks. Award construction for Upper York Creek Dam removal is a big, a big goal for early next year. And then completing the ADA curb ramp replacement on Railroad Avenue. Completing the downtown restroom project, I believe we're going to planning commission in a couple of weeks, to get approval, seek approval from the commissioners. Develop a facilities master plan. Complete repairs at the Lower York Creek Reservoir. Begin design on Main Street sidewalk repair, if we are granted the O-BAG grant, and that goes to the MBTA Board, April 19th, so that's 1.2...
O-BAG stands for?
One Bay Area Grant, it's cycle two. It's a federal grant. Continue and improve cross-training. As you're aware, we're, I think we're missing three, three maintenance or Public Works crews. We're currently trying to hire our water treatment plant operator, and we're down a Public Works Director. So we're doing what we can with what we have, and we know that we need to cross-train a little bit, so if we do, someone gets sick, or we lose someone, we have some cross-training going on, and we can pick up. And the crews have done amazingly that way, as well as our water and wastewater treatment One of another big goals this year is to adopt the Impact Fee Study next year, and with the help of finance and planning. And our only request for administration side is to, in 1718, is to implement the ADA Transition Plan. We brought that to council's attention on February 14. That is going to be about $213,000 a year, for years one and five, that is per year. And we're hoping to facilitate half of those costs with different road and grant fundings to do the sidewalk and ADA improvements, and the other half would be anticipating for government buildings would come from the general fund. Ongoing unmet needs are traffic engineering studies. We get a lot of requests in Public Works for looking at different intersections or streets for speeding. I know, all right off the top of the head, we have, I've gotten requests for Woodbridge, and maybe some crosswalk, looking at crosswalk improvements. Elmhurst, there's speeding elements there, and of course, the Pratt and Highway 29-Main Street interchange, or not interchange, but intersection. interchange, but intersection. Council only just recently requested that I investigate, Public Works investigate that intersection. Right now, we have a lot of construction going on out there. I don't think a true representation of what we're going to see as a traffic pattern is not going to happen until we get Los Alcubis open and seeing how traffic patterns work from there. But we are monitoring it, continuing to monitor it, and this is one way we can also actually do a study. And then a downtown parking study, it's always been a question on how we can improve parking downtown, and we know NOAA, the planning department's working on that, the Mitchell location, but it's one of our goals from last year, I think it needs to be a goal for next year if we can get to it or fund it. On to government buildings, 1617 achievements, completing installation of surveillance cameras for the police department, complete the installation tomorrow of a medicine drop-off container for the police department, and continue to respond to staff help desk requests. As you saw from HR, we had over 300 track-it tickets. A lot of times, we're not always tracking those because we are, have personal relationships with each other, and hey, can you come fix this, and it happens without the track it, but we need continued help. Goals and objectives for next year is repair the library roof over public restrooms, seal repair Carnegie Building Windows, the Carnegie elevator must be repaired, and build the new police department interview room. And unmet needs for government buildings is designate sinking funds and begin repairs on a lot of these facilities. On the next page, we have a matrix, thank you Director Mitz for providing this, of all the repairs that, ongoing repairs at Carnegie Teen Center, the City Hall, Library, Fire Station, Police Station, we have a lot of repairs that haven't been funded but need to be done. And we need to roll out a facility maintenance plan to get those completed, but first, we need to find funds to fix them. Storm drains, 1617 achievements, complete over a dozen inspections during the rainy season and issue corrections and citations to construction sites, clean Sulfur Creek as part of Coastal Cleanup Day, complete and submit stormwater permit annual report, organize and held various stormwater best management training for Public Works staff, develop stormwater pollution prevention plan for the wastewater treatment plant, and participate, continue to participate in regional monthly meetings with Napa County and neighboring Other additional, developed Mexican required stormwater inspections of city facilities and operation and maintenance activities. We have a picture of one of our construction sites here in the photo. Our objectives next year are to continue cleaning inspection of storm drain conditions, that includes that vector truck that we have in our fleet, for prevention of flooding during heavy rains, and compliance with municipal, our MS4 permit, which is a municipal separate storm sewer permit, continue to monitor construction sites for stormwater compliance, replace additional storm drain manhole rims and covers, and remove drainage system at the, improve the drainage system at the Corporation Yard, including the stormwater gas-powered backup pump. For those who aren't aware, we do flood our Corporation Yard, we've been very fortunate this year, again, that things remain in operation.
There was an extremely close call one day.
Yes. Streets, do I have any, that's next year, right? 1617, complete all monthly clean scrubbing of the downtown sidewalks, it's very important for slips and falls, that maybe can maintain these, repair and replace priority trip and fall hazards in public right-of-ways, trim trees along city streets to maintain required 14-foot fire and safety code clearances, patch, pave, water, and sewer repairs throughout town. And our goals next year are implement a sidewalk repair program, and implement street sign retroreflectivity program along with the documented inventory of all signs throughout Unmet needs, of course, are ongoing repair and maintenance of city streets. Measure T goes into effect in 2018, but we won't see the first funds in 2019. Even with those, it's about approximately $600,000 of funds coming in, it's not still going to meet all our needs, but if we can maybe implement and get some of our main collectors on the federal listing, we can try to leverage those funds with other federal grant fundings or state grant fundings, but it's an ongoing need for our city. On to the trees. 1617 achievements, we planted five new trees for Arbor Day at the library, planted and maintained replacement trees in the Tunnel of Elms, and we planted and maintained Main Street tree removal and replacement. We recently just paved over, put some temporary pavers in three areas where we moved trees on Main Street. We're hoping with the grant award that we can replace all those trees with street trees designated for streets and fix all the root issues we're having down there. Our goals next year are supporting the Tree Committee, continue to support the Tree Committee, train a second city arborist for certification, that's part of our cross-training, continue city tree maintenance program, continue to work with local schools, and prune our heritage On to parks maintenance, our 1617 achievements, our repairs to Lyman Park Bathroom to address wood rot, install three new drinking fountains at Crane Park, and work with Parks and Rec Committee to establish adopt a park program. 1718 goals are to make repairs to Lyman Park sewer laterals and train a second playground inspector, again, cross-training.
Repair to Lyman Park.
Unmet needs are proactive maintenance, a lot of times, we're responding to fires, but hopefully, when we're fully staffed, we can be more proactive than our maintenance. On to our garage divisions, operate the garage in a cost-efficient manner and recommend replacement of older vehicles as required, back to one of our unmet needs, continue a regular routine maintenance program for the entire city fleet with all points checked on every service when due per mileage. And our goals and objectives for next year are continue the high level of service on vehicles and equipment to minimize downtime, continue technical training on diagnostic equipment, research the possibility of adding zero emissions under alternate fuel vehicles to the fleet. And as I, we've already gone over several times, the different departments, Equipment Replacement Fund is one of our big unmet needs. Are there any questions before I go on to the enterprises?
Well, it's a very long list of unmet needs on the general fund side, for sure, and probably more than you're going to be able to get to in the next fiscal year. There's going to be some prioritization that's going to be required. I don't think this is particularly the form to try that, but it is impressive to see how much needs to be done and how, first of all, how excellent our Public Works crews are patching things up and keeping us going with Band-Aids, basically. It's very impressive to watch that, but we need to get beyond that, without a doubt, to maintain our city properly. Let me open the public hearing.
Good evening, just to pay some attention to the St. Helena Chamber, just to be real quick, we work quite a bit with the St. Helena Downtown Renaissance with the Public Works Department, and again, very professional staff, they do a great job. Everybody from, Tobias has worked very hard on this restroom project, he is, he's fully committed to it, he's doing a great job, he's making sure it complies with everything, gone way beyond what the Downtown Renaissance could have done on our own. So really appreciate all of his work, and we all know how badly we need those restaurants for Main Street, and they're not just for tourists, they are for families and for the residents who are down on Main Street, too. We're so excited about the possibility of the sidewalks and of the grant, that potential, don't want to jinx it, but I think that Councilmember White definitely needs to be thanked for that, and obviously Tracy, who's done a great job with all the grants. I've really appreciated Tracy, she's done a great job at really being creative and finding a lot of different things that are possible. She makes me think that there's a lot of really creative things to do out there. She and I are going to work on some ADA compliance things in the near future to help businesses comply with ADA, she's got some great ideas, so really appreciate that. And then we work quite a bit with your, with your staff, you know, Hanging Holidays, Lyman Park with the music picnics, Carlos, Juan, Glenn, all were great people, helping us out whenever we need, extremely responsive. And then, you know, Jim Howar was a really good, really good work with, really good person to work with, too. So again, just wanted to commend the Public Works Department, you've got a good staff there, very responsive, very professional, and we've enjoyed working with them quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I just have one other thought, certainly, I'm very pleased to see Woodbridge Crosswalk as something at least to look at. The Woodbridge residents have impressed on me every time I run for mayor, the importance of having a crosswalk there. The other place where you might take a look and see whether a crosswalk might be feasible is at Silverado Orchards, near where they exit their property. I've been told by residents there that they, too, would very much like a crosswalk. There has to be some way of getting our residents safely across the streets without fearing moving traffic. All right, that takes us to our enterprise funds, and we're going to start with the water enterprise, and I realize this is going to be relatively summary, we've obviously spent a huge amount of time on this in connection with the Water and Wastewater Rate Study that was adopted by the council last fall and that is under further review by the recently appointed ad hoc Water and Wastewater Committee. So this, I'm sure, will be fairly summarized in comparison to the great detail to which this new committee and its volunteers have voluntarily subjected themselves.
And I also wanted to add that a lot of these items that are now in the goals instead of unmet needs are some of the projects that are capable of moving forward now because of the rate study being passed. In previously years, they were in the unmet needs form, and now they're in the next year goals and objectives to complete, so just as a heads up.
It's progress, isn't it?
Yes. So water distribution, which is also done by, it's part of the enterprise, but it's done by the Public Works crews. The 1617 achievements is completing the annual flushing of water system lines, this helps with water quality issues if you don't do it annually. You've got the dead ends, like the hydrants and any areas where it's not looped, they got to flush the system to keep the sediment from building up at the end of them. Repairing pump seals at the Rutherford Pump Station facilitated the water connection to the Los Alcubis Hotel. For those who weren't know, there was a lot of leaks that we were chasing along the run to the, it actually went from Los Alcubis to the Tunnel of Elms, so there was a lot of leaks that we had to run around and figure out what was going on and before we could do the connection and actually cap an old line. Another one was we negotiated with Martini Winery for their upgrade in their water line so they could get adequate fire services to their, to the winery. We negotiate replacement of 40 feet of water main along Main Street or Highway 29 and add addition of a shut-off valve. For those who aren't aware, there was over a mile or two, at least a mile of line that had no shut-off valve, so if we were having to make a repair, we're shutting off a lot of businesses downstream, so, and/or if we had a blowout. And that's one of our unmet needs, and water distribution is a lot of replacement of lines in the future.
Do you have, do you have good maps that show exactly what's there, or is it, to some extent, sort of trying to figure it out on the spot when something goes wrong?
We have approximate mapping of our city system a few years ago, someone asked Coastland, I'm not sure which Public Works Director did it at the time, but we had Coastland provide, plotting all the approximate locations of our utilities. We have sewer, water, and storm drain. We need to improve the accuracy of those, but they're pretty darn close.
Okay, good.
Another water distribution achievement was working on an outlet repair at the Lower Reservoir. This is non, this is, is it all reported in the water repair? I'm thinking, this is the raw water, Lower Reservoir.
Correct, raw water, yeah.
Raw water. And goals and objectives is continue our annual flushing of water system for water quality control, and completing the water leak survey on the city's water distribution system. We do have some notes on where it's possible leaks, we need to really implement some time in doing a survey, so we're proactive.
Right, and the goal there is to get down our unaccounted-for water loss.
And yes, prioritize projects. On to Stonebridge Wells, last year's achievements were replacing filters one through four, or rehabilitating them, recon the inside and outside services, and install new media and plumbing. Our goals for next year is improve security using motion sensors and improve communication system, reporting systems such as SCADA to our water treatment plant.
Such as SCADA?
I don't know the acronym for that, but it's a reporting system that we use for water and wastewater treatment plants, like micro-sensors.
Okay.
Do you know the acronym? Okay. Sorry, that's an old one, I don't know the answer. But the water treatment plant, they achieved this year is completing the fuel tank replacement for the backup generator. We completed a state division of safety of dams, required intake structure and outlet pipe repairs at the Lower Reservoir, issued requests or proposals for disinfection byproduct Other achievements were, are we having duplication here? Sorry, I feel like I'm redundant out here. Okay, we had a couple of things down at the Lower Reservoir, the geotechnical exploration and stability analysis at Lower Reservoir, looking at the dam instability and whether we have to lower the elevation of the water to not have an O'Orville issue, so.
My understanding is that for some years, we've had to lower the elevation, and the question's whether we might have to lower it even further.
Correct.
But in any event, I'm very anxious to hear the report when this is completed. I'm obviously hoping that there's no issue with the division of dam safety and that the tests come back and show that we have reasonable stability there.
Yes, and as we just issued additional scoping from our consultant Kleinfelder, they have one more study to look at before we submit the final report to the state.
There's no doubt the Public Works crew is out and about.
Yeah. Our 1718 goals and objectives are completing the homes tank, pumps station upgrade and pipe replacement, the interior and exterior roof recoding on tank number two, complete design, the Bell Canyon intake tower replacement. We actually have a consultant we're interviewing next week, and we hope to bring an agreement to council in their first meeting in May, first or second meeting in May, and get the design awarded and start design and hopefully go to the next step next year.
Okay, now, the homes tank is a water tank that sits above Lower Reservoir, and it's on the potable water system, is that?
Correct.
Right, okay, good.
And that's in design right now with Green Valley Consulting Engineers.
And is tank two the second tank that's up there somewhere?
I believe so.
Okay.
I can, I'm very pleased to see the Bell Canyon intake tower replacement there, and the fact is that it was, and the cost of replacing that tank, we're in the 2011 rate study, and we just never got to it, and I've been worried almost every day that we're going to have a failure with respect to that intake tower, it's just on its last legs, as I saw from photographs that Mr. Palmer presented at one point.
Yes, it's concerning, you know, you're talking about people, our staff are out there on that intake tower, turning and opening, operating it manually, and I'm concerned, definitely concerned about it, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it. The next step is getting a design contract for a Bell Canyon Creek inflow measurement, and we're drafting a RFP to get that out, so hopefully, we have a contract awarded and design starts next year as well.
And that relates to dealing with our bypass requirements, not that we're not doing reasonably well with respect to it, but the state for years has said we need better inflow monitoring equipment, and that, too, was in the last rate increase, and we never got to it.
And the last one on this list is to replace the metalwood tanks and upgrade pump station, and as you've remarked, that a lot of these projects here have been on hold due to funding and/or delayed, there have been different starts and stops with them, and with the rate study, we can move forward with them. Unmet needs are the raw water station upgrades and Lower York Creek Dam rehabilitation. Right now, we only have two users with water agreements, so we have to be careful on what we implement out there, but also meet our state requirements and regulations.
Oh, this is the, this is the, this is the one from the other day?
This was last Friday's. This was last Friday's water break, or water blowout on, on Main Street, I believe was near the Davies Winery or Old Zoom Walt. And this is why we need a water replacement program. We have a lot of old infrastructure in the ground. I would say that's over 50 years old, maybe it's newer, but we need a replacement program in place, and prioritization of projects. And the other part along that main line is, is an old steel line that doesn't meet industry standards as far as steel. It's such a strange diameter that we had to do a unique fix with Martini's connection, new connection to their site, so a replacement. So, we have a lot of old infrastructure, and a lot of it doesn't meet today's standards.
And at 5% a year, it'll take 20 years to repair pipes in similar condition. It's just, it's crazy.
This is a good photograph for the front page of The Star, Mr. Doydy.
[laughing].
All right, that gets us through the water enterprise. Are there any questions from council at this point? Let me open the public hearing, close the public hearing. I don't think, does anybody else have any more questions? Certainly, the public work staff has provided an awful lot of information on our needs with respect to our water enterprise since I've been mayor, and continue to do so. I might, the only further comment, which was interesting to me, and which came up at our, maybe it was our last city council meeting, was that because of all the rains we had this year, it required that we spend an additional close to $100,000 on treatment chemicals at our wastewater treatment plant. So, it's a pretty significant impact just from the rains that we had this year. Is my memory about right on that?
Yes.
Okay. That takes us to our wastewater enterprise.
Our wastewater collection staff, that's also the same staff at the Corp Yard that does the, the storm and streets, Glenn Price's division. 1617 achievements were cleaning three miles of sewer mains and several hundred feet of sewer laterals, submitting discharge reports as required of the state after significant storm events. As many of you are aware, we had a couple manhole covers blow during some of the significant, and that's also from the INI or infiltration inundation of our groundwater and storm influence. So, one of our goals and objectives next year is to continue to identify and repair both wet weather, weather and dry weather sources of inflow and infiltration. We're trying to partner with Calistoga to utilize their smoke detection system to first check out Cornella subdivision to see where we might have some infiltration issues, and we know we have them there.
We do, because two of the wastewater storm drain caps, covers blew off during one of the storms. That's not satisfactory.
Yes, so, as soon as things calm down, the city's, Calistoga's offered to bring two of their, their crew members with the machine and work with our guys and get the work done, and maybe we prioritize some other sites as well. We continue on to improve the industrial source outreach, education, inspection program, you know, as you know, grease traps and some of the loading on our systems from restaurants and other industrial activities, wineries. One of the things I did not know is one of the first things, and public outreach, that's another requirement from the state regulators, dental floss, that's one of the main binders in our grinder pump or muffin monster, is dental floss gets caught up in there and binds it up, and that was news to me. I got that education about a month ago.
Get the dentist to have an outreach.
Right, and, yeah. And continuing with the wastewater collection training program of our city staff, and, and as one, what someone else, there's a lot of regulation now on our storm water, a lot of regulation in water and our wastewater, so it's an ongoing changes. 1617 achievements with our wastewater treatment plant, complete and obtained water board approval of our wastewater treatment upgrade feasibility study. We're anticipating the, the final draft in May. We had our workshop last week, and it was well-attended, over a dozen people, residents and council members, and the mayor came and listened to our presentation, and I think it was, went over really well. There were some great comments and feedback from it, and I haven't gotten the other written feedback since then, but we're, we're looking to get our slides and PowerPoint up on the website soon. I haven't gotten to that this week, but I hope to get it on the first of Monday. All new standard operating procedures written for the.
What happened?